Okay. Well, okay, there we go. This is a regular meeting with variants on board adjustment adequate notice this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the open public meetings act. At time of the board reorganization in January this year, the board adopted a regular meeting today before the unit. Notice schedule sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January thirty first, twenty twenty five, and the tour of its lines on January one, twenty twenty five. It's known to also posted on board, uh, voting board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by statute. Copy the notices and have been available to the public and is on file in the office in the world. Copy of the notice also sent to members of the public as a, as a request of such information and according to the statute. Add a quick notice had been given, the board secretary is directed to include the statement in the meeting. For proceeding with the formal meeting tonight, I'd like to say a few words to the applicants who are expert in knowing against about the role and authority of the trade and his own board adjustment. Board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and its limited authority is specifically set forth in borough ordinances and in New Jersey municipal land use law. It's quasi-traditional nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers upon a other merit council. None of the work is not an act of borough land use laws and regulations, the borough council does that. So any words about enforced land use laws of the borough of Berry, this is the responsibility of the Borough Code enforcement officer. This board deals, feels further leaving requirements to boroughs landing slides, or denials by utility officer. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zone regulations, but must meet specific criteria required by the New Jersey municipal land use law and the variant ordinances by requiring certain, by satisfying certain required standards approved. The board has no authority to weigh these requirements, but proof is always part of an applicant to show that he or she is entitled specifically to the question. The applicant must prove that a deviation from the regulations will have consequences to the ordinance, remember the deviation was substantially now outweighed and detriment to its own plan. Variants related to the feature use of land are not intended or authorized to be temporary or any personal situations. Roll call, please.
Mister Natase. This is Angela here. Sir Ryan.
Here.
Mister Porte.
Uh, here.
Doctor Walker. Mrs Newman, here. Mister Cincella.
Here.
Mister Shidelli.
Here.
Mister Leder.
Please join me in your party.
Part of the way to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on a nation.
Okay, um, we're going to be taking the house Scott's Realty matter first, but before we do that, I understand that Hagerty matter was listed as the second matter in your business. Mr Ravens, you're here?
I am.
Mr. Paul, please. That the board secretary confirmed the jurisdiction of this matter.
Yes.
So chairman and board members, Mark Akins, on behalf of the Hagerty family, uh, might ask that the matter be carried to, uh, the October meeting of the board without the need for further notice and that a council deemed my prior notice by certified mail publication in order, and the board may retain jurisdiction without further notice.
Uh, stipulation of extension contact.
Yes, sir.
Uh, sure, what are we, uh, what are we looking at in October right now?
Um, just one other applications scheduling card.
Okay, it's like we'll, uh, we'll put Hagerty on, uh, for October. Anybody have any questions, concerns, anybody want to make a motion? Make a motion to carry the Hagerty matter to the October meeting without a part for the notice based on stipulation or extension contact.
Sir.
Mrs Angelo, yes, Mister Porte.
Uh, yes.
Mrs Newman, yes. Mister Cincella.
Yes.
Mister Shidelli.
Yes.
Mister Major.
Yes. Uh, Mr Ravens, you're also hearing the Murphy matter. I know I just want to point out to you that we only have seven members in attendance tonight. If you know that, uh, Mr. Ryan is going to refuse with your matter, she only has six.
Yes, I do. I am, uh, Ms. Olson definitely communicated that information to me. Yes.
Great.
Ready to proceed nonetheless.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you for the accommodation, ladies and gentlemen.
You got it. All right, we're ready for Hopscotch Realty. Sorry, can we bring anybody up to testify with the word of the name?
Sure. We're gonna bring our, um, engineers, architect and planner up.
Want to swear on the applicant's intent?
Um, sure.
Doesn't matter if they're all perfectly sworn, they don't fall.
Everybody's been previously sworn, but we can swear.
redo it. So always swear the testimony before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Okay. Yeah.
I do.
I do. Okay, same directions I've given you in the past couple of meetings, just before we start speaking. State your name, word of record spelling your last name. Next, I'd like to be seated now. Now, so it's like that extent here.
Yeah, you.
Don't miss it. Right now, everybody, as possible. I have some additional exhibits, like tomorrow, you need two letters of August twenty second, twenty twenty five from inside engineering. One is response to CV. The one to, uh, basically talk about the revised change in the additional application, like to mark those two letters as number exhibit as A twenty four. Like to mark the revised inside engineering submission of August twentieth, twenty twenty five, seven sheets as A twenty five. Like to mark the shore point architectural revisions of August twenty second, twenty twenty five. This A twenty six, A twenty seven, we have revised architectural four point of eight, sorry, eight twenty one, twenty five. And then we have there's an additional report of ZB four, CME. Port is, uh, September second, twenty twenty five, like the fourth, each hearing will be willing to see through this term, this so. But also like tomorrow, in package of exhibits and certifications for our board members that do not present at all, you that have not read and listened to the, uh, the, I guess the paper of the hearing, uh, that they, that they missed and reviewed exhibits. We just marked that as CB five. Do you have any additional exhibits?
Um. Do we have something rendered?
No, no, we do have some.
We'll, we'll have one, one, one exhibit that we have a slight modification on.
We're already on the way to get to it.
Let's mark it.
And.
Eight twenty eight, I guess.
Eight twenty eight, are you going to identify the exhibits for me? Uh, it's a revised set of drawings with two, uh, points of clarification that were noted in during this letter, but CME. Date. I'm sorry, date, uh, the date, I didn't change the date on the drawings, but, uh, it's still the eight twenty one and twenty five drawings for.
Sacred, what do you have a hand, hand change? How did you change?
Uh, no, I actually did revise it and added some points of clarity that was with the same date.
The same.
Anything else?
I think that'll be it.
Mister Kovac, eight twenty six of architectural plans and then it's eight twenty seven of the response letter.
Twenty six site plan, twenty seven is the architectural, twenty eight.
Twenty five is inside plans. Twenty five is revised inside issue submission. Twenty six is sure portion architecture revision since the initial plan, then revised architecture say twenty seven.
We, we, we did two submissions. We did the submission of the changes and then we did a narrative submission of the changes from.
So which members did the narrative?
Uh, I'm not quite sure the way he described him, but I think we have all four.
Could be A twenty six.
I think we have all four covered.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mister Bruno, can I ask you for two things before you get started? First is, could you please list out for the board the variances that are triggered by the application and then independently, and like verification as to whether or not the proposal supports to be our forty requirement? We sort of, I, I sort of identified at the end of the year and last time, um, that we were using all the R thirty numbers. So hopefully somebody confirmed where we are relative to our forty.
Okay. Uh, just by way of introduction, Michael Bruno, on behalf of the applicant, this is a carry from uh, your last meeting of August seventh, which was a carry from your meeting of July tenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, the applicant has made, um, significant revisions to the plans in response to the comments that we've heard from the board, trying to address the concerns that were raised. The relief required at this point uh, is for variance for your habitable floor area. Where fifty one hundred square feet is, is permitted. We are down now to eight thousand. Um, help me with this one.
Nine eighty one.
Nine eighty one. Uh, which is a reduction from the original submission of, um, eleven thousand eight twenty seven was the original house design that the applicant requested. So we've just reduced it to below nine thousand square feet. Uh, and that's inclusive of the sports court. Without the sports court, the house itself is seven thousand eight hundred and thirty one square feet. That is the, the variance we need. We do need a technical variance for the height of the fence where it's forty eight inches and forty two is permitted because of the pool safety standard. Uh, but that's a small section of defense and that, that's a carryover that we're keeping. So all other variances have been removed. Uh, there was a variance for height for the garage and there was a variance for a four car garage. We reduced that to three. Um, we've, we've made multiple changes and we're going to go through all of those now for you, but those are the two variances that are left. We are not seeking the R forty upzoning uh, because we do not comply with the side yard setback for the R forty zone. On the one side, there's a twenty five foot requirement. And, uh, we have twenty three point something.
The principal structure.
For the principal structure, so uh, because of that, we don't qualify for the upzoning.
Floor area, it's.
Well, uh, that, yeah, obviously, but that, that would be, that would increase the floor area that would permit it, uh, if we did have that setback, so uh, we didn't, we didn't seek the upzoning because we didn't qualify for it.
And, and Jordan, if we look at the R forty standards across the board, is the only, um, deviation from the R forty standards, both the floor area and that one side yard setback, friends, everything else combined?
I did not already do a comparison, um.
And don't, you don't have to do it on the spot, but if you could do it as we're going and maybe start.
We, we have that. We'll, our engineer will. I mean, it's, it's, we're not seeking that, so um, but we can testify as to what those, what those items are.
Okay.
Um, so what we'd like to do is we, we'd like to kind of go through all of the changes that we made. Um, since we started the application, in particular since the last meeting. Uh, I'd like to have the, the architect describe the changes to the building, which I think was the most critical issue that we heard, the size of the home. Uh, we've made substantial efforts to reduce that, um. As you heard, without the sports coat court, it's under eight thousand square feet. With the sports coat court, it's eighty nine hundred and some odd square feet. Uh, but that's a substantial reduction from the original eleven thousand, uh, nine hundred and some odd square feet. Um, we'll have the architect describe all the changes to the home. We've done a couple of other little tweaks, trying to address comments like views from the river, uh, enhancing the architecture in that regard. Uh, and then we'll bring the engineer up to talk about the site changes that we've made to try to address all the issues that we heard with respect to the site. Setback to the sports court, coverages, stormwater, et cetera. Um, a multiple of changes we've got approaching thirty changes that we've made since the initial application, all in response to your concerns that were raised. Uh, we've made it Herculean effort, try to accommodate your changes and still build a home of my client's dreams, which they've worked very hard on. Uh, trying to make it fit on the property beautifully. We think it does. We think it's going to be an enhancement to your community. We hope after this presentation, you feel the same way and you vote to approve it. So let us, let us, uh, introduce the, the architect and go through the, the conversations he had with the applicant, uh, how we came about these changes, how it reduces the square footage. How we tried to improve the look from the riverside in particular, because we heard that comment. Tried to move the sports court a little bit further. Uh, issues as to noise reflection and the, the, the garage door accommodation, now it's away from the neighbor, trying to address those concerns. And we'll go through Mr. Rizzo's letter too, and he's raised a number of issues he wants to hear testimony on. So let's start with, uh, Justin, if you, if you could just identify yourself again, um, let's, um, it's identify the conversations you've had with the applicant and just all of the changes that they've made.
Okay, uh, first of all, my name is Justin Calvert, Shaw Point Architecture, uh, looking the architect working on this project, open and conscious, so. Um, you know, we've made a lot of changes. Do you want me to start by summarizing from the very beginning or just let's start with the latest?
Let's summarize from the beginning and then let's focus on the latest because we did testify at the last meeting, those initial changes, but let's summarize what they were. And then what you've done with the applicant to try to further address the comments that we heard from the board.
Uh, okay, so the previous, uh, previous meetings, we, uh, removed four hundred and ninety square feet of the garage footprint. We were able to eliminate one garage bay. Um, that basically took one of the variances that we were asking for off the table. Um, the garage roof was redesigned in order to comply with the town's height ordinance, which enabled the area or try say it's the vaulted space above the garage under the roof line to no longer be considered part of the floor area. Um, and that, that actually made a reduction of seventeen hundred and ninety square feet just with that, uh, modification to the roof line. Uh, the sports court accessory building was reduced in width. Um, and that reduced the square footage from thirteen hundred and forty four square feet to twelve ninety six. Um, the sports court building was relocated previously, um, back after the first meeting. Um, mechanical equipment that was previously located inside yard uh, was relocated to be closer to the house and further away from the property line to, you know, avoid any negative impact. Uh, the total floor area was proposed then was nine thousand nine hundred and eighty eight. The first application was eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty seven. Yeah. The changes we made to the plan since the September fourth meeting, we kind of, uh, I'm sorry.
August.
Yeah, after the August seventh meeting in preparation for the September fourth meeting. Um, we had a lot of conversations and what we wanted to do is preserve some of the architectural elements of the house, and we really liked, uh, the overall composition. Uh, but we did want to be sensitive to the fact that, you know, if we can reduce mass on the water side of the property, that would be a benefit to both, you know, the application, it, it's going to look great. Um, but also have more, uh, positive appeal from the larger. So some of our moves were taken in that stride. We also relocated, uh, one of the bedrooms and bathroom suite on the east side of the house to the area that was the, uh, vaulted space above the great room. So we wanted to preserve the intent that we wanted to have, uh, a great room that had a ceiling height that was elevated. Uh, but instead of having a double height, your double height space, we actually, um, increased the ceiling height from the standard ten foot to eleven foot just at that great room. So what that enabled us to do is to utilize the space above it, um, to put some of the second floor program and kind of overall condense the plan and push parts of it inward. Uh, there will be two steps up when we exit from like leading part of the hallway into the area that would be a part of the greater, um.
And this is the set that was submitted.
This is.
Subject to the changes that you're going to describe.
We'll, we'll get to that, yes. To this area, which would be the footprint of the break room below, that has, uh, bedroom three, which was previously on this portion of the building over here. So where that, where is that previously counted as floor area and was not being used at all?
Correct.
You're now actually utilizing it. Floor area doesn't necessarily change by that because they're already counted. Who are you taking advantage of space then? That would be true, but we also reduced the size of things. So any net reduction would have to be in addition to, you know, we were already getting usual utilizing that space numerically or force of calculation. Now we're actually utilizing it. And we have a reduction on top of that, so, um, we made a lot of modifications, uh, to principally this side of the house, but in general.
And what's the top? Is the top looking at the river as you described these?
Uh, in, in the plan right now, this would be the side that's closest to the river. It's compared to be east, this is the river here. Um, the master bedroom, we actually pulled back three feet from where it previously was, so it's three feet less in length. Uh, bedroom two on this wing here previously was all the way out here is five foot reduction, so it's actually pushed further back in. Um, bedroom number three, which is now centered above the great room, was previously in this location here, um, and actually this whole footprint was kind of occupied by, uh, program elements that have somewhat been relocated. We changed the flow of the hallway.
Well, let, let's go back to that bedroom. What, what should that allow you to do? By relocating that bedroom, did it allow you to strengthen the footprint and reduce square footage? How did, how does that affect your design?
Well, um, by relocating the element here, we are able to kind of put a covered balcony on the side, um, which doesn't actually contribute to the floor area, but even that, the balcony is tucked in about five feet from where the outbounds of that room previously was. So it is conscious effort to, you know, subtly reduce the massing of the building, um, vertically, you know, so.
And what's the thought behind the covered area now instead of just popping that off?
Um, you know, typical of the style of these waterfront homes, you see a lot of shape style residences, covered balconies and stuff, they're having a picture of the future. What they do is, um, they give us a shadow, they have a depth to them. Uh, it's an element that is aesthetically positive in terms of the the effect of the review, especially from the water, um, you're going to see that balcony, but it compared to something that's a flat, uh, enclosure, um, a covered balcony does have a lot more of a, you know, helps you reduce the mass and be overall visual.
How many, uh, total balconies do you have now?
There's, uh, there are now two covered balconies on the second floor, um, and there's an additional, uh, porch on the first floor that was not in the previous.
So let, let's get to the covered balconies. That was raised in Mr. Rizzo's letter and how you calculate whether or not in fact some of that should be calculated in square footage. And what was your, what was your thinking behind that design? What, what does it add architecturally to the home? And, uh, let's, let's look at an elevation so they can get a, uh, the board can get a sense for how that looks. And as you do that, just describe as you were designing this and speaking with the client. So, you know, it was a mindset of, of making that space covered space and what kind of feature does it add to the home that you designed?
Um, there was a lot of parts to that, so actually I'm going to first respond to, to Jordan's comment, um, and kind of all ties in together, so. You know, it's basically what I did is I tracked with the line of thirty inch above the floor happens and there is some space in this, this area as we discussed that will be added to the, to the footprint. I, I had it noted on the second floor plan and the exact square footage of it. It's, uh, you know, less the footprint of the, which has been our discussion.
Let's go through the overall concept and then even get back to the technical square footage, but let's, let's do the overall reasoning behind your design.
We did, we wanted to keep some of these root elements that are, you know, really integral to the design from, from the start. Um, balcony in this position, it's a nice additional element on this facade that's going to, you know, look towards the, you know, kind of your entry. Um, it has a lot of depth to it and it's kind of a typical element that you'd see in a lot of high shape of silhouettes.
Is that, is that the river facing, I would.
This would actually, you need to land facing elevations, officer.
Well, that's what I thought. So, so which side of the, is the lower?
There's two, Mr. Chairman.
There's two balcony, one on this front side.
We're, we're doing the front one first.
As an example, but we're not talking about the removal of the bedroom in the second anymore. We're talking about the description balcony is generated.
We're going to get to this, we're going to get to the second one. The first one he's describing is the one in the front of the house, and then we're going to show you the one in the rear, which is related to the bedroom that we had just talked about to see how, show you how that affects the design.
But they're both actually on the same side of the house, the balcony, is that correct?
Uh, well, one of them faces uh, this one faces, uh.
No, what I'm saying is they're both on the same, if you're looking.
They're on the same page.
He's side, yeah. Yeah, okay.
And the, the rear facing balcony actually is super to, to elevation stuff, so.
Right, so it goes.
All right. Um, sorry, keep going. Uh, so you have this element that has a recess here, it's going to provide another break in the elevation, uh, point of shadow, uh, point of interest, uh, it centers over some of the elements below it. Um, we created it as, you know, you step out from the hallway into the, the covered balcony. And the, uh, sorry, the, uh, plate, the, the wall is actually located, um, at a full plate height, so it would be at the same standard second floor plate height. Um, to the point of where we discussed, I, I would, I would just generally say table that, the technical stuff. Okay. Because it is really technical, you might lose some people, so. I'll just continue, as Mr. Green says, I would go with the overall elements and then. Okay. Get into that. Um. Get. All right, so how do I want to say this?
Let, let's go, let's go. Yeah, I think you described that. Let's continue with the changes that you've made to reduce it certainly. So I'd like the board to understand the changes that the applicant has made so they understand how we reduce the square footage and how that affects the design. And at the same time, I think you think you've enhanced it as a result of those changes. But keep going on all of the change.
Do you want, uh, since we were talking about the balconies.
You can finish that.
The other balcony, um, one that was previous, uh, is bedroom three. Um, you can see it from the east elevation here, um, on the side.
This is looking from.
This is east elevation. So you're looking from.
Side yard.
Prophet, yeah. Um, this balcony actually kind of sits on the corner, so you will see it from these, uh, from the river.
Let's describe it first and then we'll flick it and show it from the river.
Previously, you know, you had these kind of two main volumes and they actually projected a lot further out. There's a debt difference in about five feet from where this balcony is now versus where the wall from the room previously was. So it's all been in, in an attempt to kind of condense the plan inward. You know, we're programming elements relocated on the second floor, building that void that was in the middle and kind of pushing it in detail, the perimeter. Um, and all that does is it helps to, to try to reduce the mass of this house visually from the exterior.
From an architectural perspective, is it an enhancement or is it, how would you describe that?
I think it's another point of character. Um, it's, it's definitely an architectural element that's going to add more interest in the side. Um, whereas opposed to a flat wall with a couple window penetrations, it's got more interest to it, has a higher level of detailing between the railings, the columns, et cetera. Um, so yes, it would be a positive addition.
All right, now let's flip it over and look at it from the river. The point to the bedroom area that you just described.
It would be right in this spot. It's actually that whole piece is.
So from the river, uh, just describe what you're going to see and, and some of the architectural enhancements that you've worked on to try to create.
Okay.
A view from the river.
You know, as I was saying, we did push the master suite back, you know, so this is now going to have, uh, someone, uh, receding from the, the line where it was previously. Uh, this as well, I've pushed back further from where it was in the previous design. Um, and the overall, you know, there's still looks like a lot of lines and a lot, you know, plain either, but in pretty much it's, it is a visual, uh, a pretty decent visual, uh, change in the massing on that side of the house. Um, with the relocated elements, we know we tried to create a new kind of element here that fills in, uh, the initial framework that we have for the house. It has roughly the same composition as the original design. Um, still holding a lot of these center points and volumes that were initially contemplated, but, you know, again, with relocate program, there's, you know, some new opportunities. We're, you know, particularly excited about how this elevation.
And how does it all tie in? You have, is that a covered porch on the first?
Yes.
Elevation. So how, how does that feature tie into what you did with the, the bedroom?
Um, well, originally we have a roof plane that kind of started at the main ridge and actually kind of flowed all the way down. Now it's somewhat interrupted. You do have a line here. Um, but again, it's they're going to create shadow lines. It has another, you know, visual appeal to the back. Um, versus just a, a, a simple roof plane. It still accomplishes more or less the same, uh, the original intent, which was kind of overall reduce the mass of the structure, you know, visually by carrying your eye from the top to the bottom. It's just done a little bit differently, so, so complication.
Okay. Uh, you want to talk about the covered fortune more or do you want to get into the balance of the changes that we made?
Because probably all I can say about the balconies from now.
Let's cover quickly what, that Jordan had raised an issue with as to whether or not we're measuring the covered balcony properly and whether or not square footage needed to be added to to the, uh, the home as a result of the covered. Um, balcony, let's, let's just quickly go through how you did that calculation and why it doesn't need to be added.
Um. Yes.
The calculation for the covered areas so that it's not included in the habitable floor area calculation.
Well, basically as, you know, if you were to point out and, uh, the letter, the height of anything above thirty. Well, basically as, you know, if you were to point out and, uh, the letter, the height of anything above thirty inches above the second floor. That's under a slip roof even, um, will be adding towards square footage of the home. Now, Jordan, I identified this area question where the roof kind of comes down off the front balcony. Um, and to that point, there would be thirty-three square feet that would be additional, that's the, uh. The chimney chase actually doesn't, you know, contributes that. Now, when we design, uh, when we're contemplating this covered balcony here. This wall is actually located roughly symmetrically at a full plate height, so essentially it's a flat ceiling with no tapering or anything to the, to the, uh, ceiling. Now, if I'm understanding what we kind of discussed, if this actually was pushed further over. It would actually not have the connection to the second floor anymore, potentially that could be, you know, uh. Yeah, it's, it's exterior covered balcony, then it wouldn't count for, uh, uh, the reason I didn't include it. Cause I, I really assumed that really the only conceivable way to utilize the space. If that was space, it would be from the covered balcony. And also there's a couple of other points which we can circle back to. You know, the ceiling, it was intended to be flat, but if it had a pitch to it, it really wouldn't, uh, be a negative and still be. More or less utilized the same, would have no change to the exterior.
So are you proposing to add the thirty-three square feet or are you proposing to extend the covered balcony all the way to the chimney? To eliminate.
Um, what I did is actually updated the numbers to what they were detailed, just since we just talked about it and using it, so, um. But if, if it was something that, you know, for application we could.
So you could, you could reduce it by making that alteration that you just described.
Yes.
You don't see it as a benefit to your design.
No, it, it, it's an indifferent change, it has no negative impact.
And it's all exterior space.
All exterior space, it would only be adding to this, uh, covered balcony. Um, and it would not be represented on the exterior elevation, so you're standing outside of the house from the driveway. You would see no visual change.
Okay, so just to summarize that response. The covered porch is added small amount of square footage. Our intent with this whole exercise is to reduce the square footage. When we came up with the covered balconies, we thought it was a magnificent feature that would enhance the design. We got Mr. Rizzo's letter, question whether or not it raises, uh. An issue where you have to add some square footage, that's the thirty-some square feet that we're talking about, it's exterior. Technically, the way it's calculated, you have to add it in accordance with Mr. Rizzo's review. We can remove it if it was a concern of you by us adding some square footage. Uh, so we're willing to remove it and we're stipulating if that's concern of the boards. We will remove it by redesigning it, which won't have a major impact. Um. But we don't think it's, it really, it really doesn't accomplish anything, so. We'd like, like it approved that it is, but if it bothers the board that we added some square footage, we will revise it, so it doesn't.
So with regard to the second floor, I understand you relocated bedroom three to the center, an area that was already counted. You, um, replaced what had been there, the bedroom with a couple of porch. What is the net reduction of square footage on the second floor as a result of the changes that you made?
It's, it's, uh, in below six hundred, it's like six hundred and.
Six, uh, six forty-eight.
Removed from the second story.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and I, I'm looking for strength dimension back here, when you go to the, uh, north face elevation. What's the length of that horizontal fire pit?
Going about the water elevation, you're examining it.
You, you would be questioning from what extent, the other.
Uh, yeah, when you're looking at the, um. You're looking at the south, south face elevation, I was looking at it from the one.
Oh, okay, sorry.
By, it's more or less, we're a little bit more, right?
This guy, it's in this guy.
That's right. Well, what's with the lot or?
That two hundred and thirty-five feet. I'm, I'm scaling it off the site plan, um, it's easier for me, but it's about a hundred and ten feet.
Part just part of it.
Yeah. That's out. You know, about one oh, nine, one oh eight, something, it's pretty close, yeah.
What, what's, so what's your response?
My, my response is like one oh nine.
Hundred ninety?
Yeah.
Out of chimney to out of chimney.
That's like chimney outside of chimney. Yeah, really close, so I can say, sounds right, yeah.
I have a follow up on the setbacks, but while we talk about it, when you're ready to talk about the next one.
All right, let, let, let us get through the balance of the home and, uh. The other changes that we made and then we'll come back to all the questions, I don't want to get bogged down like we just did. Yeah, so let, let, let's keep going, so. With all of the modifications we've made since the last plan, not the original plan, but there was an interim modification.
Right.
What is the current size of the home? Exclusive of the sports court?
Exclusive, excluding the sports court is seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-one, you know, with the only potential. You know, that thirty, um, I, it's worth like the differential we're talking about.
Okay.
Our number is seventy, ten eighty thirty.
Let's get to the sports court, what did we end up doing with the sports court?
Sports court, we actually, um, shrunk it in two directions, so we took a foot off the width, uh, the proposed footprint is now. Twenty-five by forty-six. Um, square footage went from twelve ninety-six to eleven fifty.
Okay, so the total with the sports court. And the home is how many square feet?
Uh, the total is now eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-one.
And that's a reduction from the last application which was?
Previously was nine, eight, eight, eight.
Which is a reduction from the original request and application which was?
Eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven, okay. Oh my god. Um.
Where are we at with floor area ratio?
I have, floor area ratio, uh, the proposed is point oh eight, we were producing point oh nine.
And what's permitted?
Uh, point one five.
So that's roughly fifty-three percent of the permitted. Permitted floor area ratio. All right, any other changes to the home?
We did make modifications to the first floor, um, you know, the biggest change to, uh, was in office, we actually pinched it in, uh, in order to. Create some space to create that porch, but also to reduce square footage. Um, we also made some other minor modifications, little hallways and spaces that could stand to lose look there.
Okay, so those are all efforts.
Changes.
By the client to get you to. To reduce the size of the house and still keep their dream home.
Yeah, we tried to maintain as many of the aesthetic and components of the house that were initially there. Um, trying to keep some of the similar ideas that we started with, um, like. Yeah.
All right, uh, questions? Uh, we are.
Is there anything with regard to the design that you can point to that, um, will actually allow this home to live larger than it looks? Um, one of the things that I think when there's no ridge, that the focus on is, is that overage? So is there anything that you incorporated into your zone that's intended to make this house feel like it's appropriate for the sound? If we're going to use the R thirty standards, standard is fifty-one hours. I think that's right. Um, so is there anything that you've incorporated for that purpose?
Not quite sure I understand the, the point that you're trying to get to, but, uh, what, what's the question?
Question is whether or not the designer has utilized design techniques in order to make the house appear to be smaller than it is in reality. In order to hide the fact that it is in excess of the square footage.
Well, you know, uh, during the first meeting, I actually gave testimony about the overall composition and how we, you know, contemplated the design. One of the things we started with was to have, you know, a strong roof line that helped to bring the eye down from the top of the half building down to the first floor. So we, we do and have maintained a lot of those elements, um. One of which is kind of what we were discussing with that, that balcony, that originally was always a roof diamond and it kind of started at the same point. Um, where you had a ridge starts up high and actually tails down to, you know, the first floor, uh, facial. Um. Concepts and, and texting techniques like that were played a lot, a lot of the high shingle style houses. Um. Typical of the waterfront and that it's a trick to kind of help reduce the mass visually, so. That is a concept that we did bring to the table as far as how we approached the design.
I think the, the original testimony that we provided was, the lot is more than three times required size. So the testimony we've been submitting is that. It's in conformity with. The intent of the size of the home for a, a, a lot of that size, so it's more than three times what's permitted. But it's not more than three times, uh, the size that is allowed, it's much less. We talked about if you had a subdivision, and I know Mr. Shabetti said, well, that's going to be hard to get, but we had the size to do a subdivision. If you had two fully conforming homes, they would be much more coverage and much larger than what you have here. So you have the applicant agreeing to restrict any further subdivision, so that will never happen. And reduce the size of the home to something that would be smaller than if you were able to get a subdivision. And, and in proportion, we believe, uh, to what should be there. It's nearly half of what your floor area ratio provides and that floor area ratio is there to make sure that the size of the home. Is not too big for the size of a lot, here it's only half what you guys think is permitted. And I understand you have this overarching maximum home size. And I'm going to get into some of the thoughts about that in my conclusion, but. We think based on the aerials that we showed. And the surrounding properties, that this is well within the size and scope of what's already out there.
So you had an opportunity.
Can I finish?
Between the last meeting and now to give us the numbers on that, but you refused to do that.
When you say numbers. What are you talking about? The numbers of the surrounding homes?
Yeah.
Well, we have them off the tax records and we provided some of them, but they're difficult to get without, without doing a study on those homes. So we looked at the aerials, we showed you the aerials. And, and we think it's in proportion, so that, that's the testimony that we provided, I'm, I'm not looking to argue with you, Mr. Shabetti, I, I know how you feel about the application. But I'm looking to make the case that we think.
Talking right now about how I feel about the application, I'm talking about how I feel about your testimony.
Okay. Um, we, we've made the case that it's in proportion to the size of, of the lot and that's, I think. Responsive to what Mr. Chairman is asking about, how does, how does the house fit on the property? All of the other setbacks, it's compliant, the height is compliant, the only relief we need putting aside the. The technical relief on the fences is the size of the home. And we've made tremendous efforts to try to address the concerns that we've heard. We think it's a little bit too big, we think the view from the river is not, is not appropriate. Move it away from the neighbor, all, all of those things we tried to address in, 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 with a lot of effort and at the ma, at the same time. Maintain the character of the home that we think is important for this important property. So it's a long winded response to your, your question and we have a lot more to present. And, and if you give us an opportunity to do that, I hope we, we convince you that the changes that we made are appropriate. For this board to act favorably on this application.
The architect, we did provide a testimony, uh, relocation of the sports court, things that.
Our engineer is going to do that. And, and we'll get into Mr. Rizzo's letter, he, he's outlined a, a lot of conditions, all of which are acceptable, it's this board we're to approve this. So, um, any other questions of the architect?
Could I just clarify on the thirty-three square feet on the second floor and tall, uh, is that included in the overall, um?
No.
It's not.
It's not, yeah.
That would have to get added.
Of course.
And, uh, some of the changes we made, I think we sort of traded inside space for outside space and I can understand that. That's probably softens, then it's a little bit compared to.
It does, yeah.
To a wall, and I'm recognizing some of the things you pulled in on the second floor. But can you tell us a little bit more about where you actually reduced mass?
Um, to that point, um, actually just bring up my one drawing here. Um, specifically on the east side, uh, I knew you're totally pointing at the, the one balcony, um, even. In that particular location, it's still a net difference in about five feet from where the wall used to be on the outside.
Would you mind pointing?
Sure.
Just say.
You all about the. Even, uh, where this balcony is, was previously wall about five feet further out.
Okay.
So there is still a net difference on top of the net reduction in square footage, so. As I said, all of those, uh, and this question, these two points specifically and mostly importantly on this side. We all step back, uh, there's still a net reduction of square footage. And distance, you know, physical, you know, separation from where it previously was, even where the new balcony is, so.
Okay, thanks for that.
Sure.
Or there's also testimony, they pulled back the mat to like three, yeah, and in the middle, I think they pulled it back by PP as well, so the depth from the front comes back and.
Jared, a, a technical question and a technical comment, but I wanted the board to. You know, have a chance to ask questions first, so before we launch a nice witness as well.
Any other questions to the architect before Jordan drops in? Go ahead, Jay.
So the thirty-three square feet in the front, I understand that, you take a look at the back to get, get a, and I'm just going to switch this. The other point C did note, uh, was where this roof comes up, there's, so this is the backside of the house, this is the rear side of the house, this is the rear side. Um, these three points, um, I have the square footage broken out, it's one and a half square feet, one square feet, one square foot, one and a half square feet. It's just a little differential between where the actual wall is and, uh, with the line of thirty inch. I do have that noted on the elevations.
And nothing in the, for the master?
This back bedroom, that, that roof actually, you know, like it was about four inches above, so. So what we're talking about is outside of the, the walls for the house, the roof slopes are greater than thirty inches in some areas. So even though it's not usable, floor area, it's, it's still technically counts for its floor area. Um, so it's fun, the whole conversation.
Yeah, it's, it's just architectural features and the slopes that's contributing to this, if it was a straight up and down house, um, it wouldn't be.
Four lot talk about thirty-five feet or thirty-three square feet.
Total, all total is thirty-eight, between thirty-three and then, you know, a handful of inches. Thanks, and then the other thing is, is more of a comment, um, Mr. Bruno talked about reducing the garage doors from four to three. And we talked about this last meeting and then tabled it a little bit, um, the ordinance talks about. Providing no more than three motor vehicles in a garage and there's three garage doors and the plans show three cars in it and technically. Likely fit more than, than three cars.
Yeah.
Um, so whether that's just a, a comment for me or possibly necessarily there is, I just want to point that out for your consideration.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay. Um, let's call the engineer Jennifer White, inside engineering. Thank you.
Have an opinion as to whether or not.
My opinion is technical nature, there would be yes. I don't know if anyone else wants to interpret it differently than I do.
It must have been, of course, it's cut off and symmetrical, right, and not notched out, is that what you think? Uh, it has that notch that I think theoretically is where you the problem, so it was.
It's deep.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Okay, yeah, the testimony was that, you know, we're going to use that area for the garden and, uh. Yeah, I guess anybody could jam another car into the garage, uh, but the intent and, uh, whatever protections you would want. Because you don't want the car in the garage, you'd rather it have it in the driveway, it doesn't make sense to me, by the way. Uh, we, we're willing to live by. Most, most.
I've got a garage where I've had to park my car. You know, you're going to have situations like that, I, I, I just wanted to know whether or not our engineer had an opinion.
You know, you're going to have situations like that, I I I just wanted to know whether or not our engineer had an opinion as to whether the technical barriers, if you needed.
I mean, garage floor area is excluded in the calculation, so I think this probably goes to the mass and volume of an oversized garage.
For the guy who threw a resolution one way or the other.
Understood, understood.
Just trying to play my game.
Understood. Move on. Okay, our engineer.
Uh, Jennifer White, licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, uh, insight engineer, this night employer. Been licensed for. Six years.
And you've been sworn.
I've been sworn.
Qualified at previous meetings. Okay, and your office made further revisions to the site plan on polling?
Yes.
All right, why don't we go ahead and identify all of the changes that have been made in the plan? Yes, and then, um. It indicate as you testify. What they're in response to in terms of what we heard from the board so that they they can get some, um. Uh, understanding of why we made the change.
Okay. Um, we've reduced total site disturbance from point nine nine six acres to point. Uh, ninety-eight zero acres and, uh, this was. In response to reducing the sounds of the house, we were able to bring in a limit of disturbance, um. One garage bay has been eliminated, um. This increased the front yard setback from, uh, two hundred and twenty. Eight point four six feet to two hundred and forty-two point four three feet. Um, the side yard setback also increased. From twenty-one point two three feet to twenty-two point nine six feet.
And those are both in exceedance of what is required.
Yes. The combined yard. Eliminating the garage. Bay and reconfiguring the east side of the house. Uh, increase the combined yard setback from seventy-seven point six two feet to seventy-nine point nine four feet.
Which is how many more feet than what's required, the minimum required?
Fifteen point nine four, the minimum required is sixty-four feet.
Thank you.
We've reduced the size of the sport court building from one thousand three hundred and forty-four square feet to one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, we've increased the side yard setback from to the work. To the sport court building from twenty-two point seven five feet to twenty-seven point two. Two feet to the nearest corner to the neighboring property, um. From the further corner, we've increased. The setback from twenty-eight point five nine feet to thirty-two point eight two feet.
And so that that difference is be booked because the lot line is on an angle.
Yes.
Measured on an angle.
Well, the sport court is not parallel to the sideline, it's at an angle. The distance.
And tho- those are both in exceedance of the.
Yes.
Side yard setback.
Yes. The, uh, distance. Of the sport court building to the principal structure decreased from. Thirty-three point two seven feet to twenty feet and that's because we brought the sport court building in a little bit.
And that was in response to some of the comments we shared about, can you move it away from the neighbor?
Yes. Uh, the maximum height of this port port building has been reduced from. Fifteen point nine four feet to fourteen point eight three feet. And the accessory ground floor area to primary ground floor area has been reduced from. Twenty-nine point nine percent to twenty-six point nine percent. Total building coverage has been reduced from nine point two three percent to eight point seven three percent. Habitable floor, well, not have, floor area was reduced from eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven square feet to. Eight thousand nine hundred eighty-one square feet. Floor area ratio.
And that's in, that's inclusive of the sports court, of course.
Yes.
And has that broken out, I know the architect testified with.
The main house has been reduced from ten thousand four hundred and eighty-three square feet to seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine square feet.
And the balance is a sports court.
Yes. Um, the floor area ratio was reduced from oh, point one one to point zero eight.
And what's the permitted maximum?
Uh, point one five. The pool has been reduced from sixty-one. Feet by thirty feet to fifty-one feet by thirty feet. Decreasing the area from two thousand two hundred and thirty-four point six eight square feet to one thousand six hundred and thirty point one nine square feet. And doing this increased the rear yard setback from seventy-four feet to eighty-one point four three feet. The side yard setback has increased from sixty point six nine feet to seventy point six nine feet. The total driveway area has been reduced from nine thousand five hundred seventy-four point seventy-nine square feet to eight thousand. Nine hundred eighty-one point seven seven square feet. We reduced the pool patio on the east side. From three thousand. Well, we reduced the side, we. Taking in the pool, we took in the patio, so the pool patio has been reduced from. Three thousand three hundred seventeen point nine three square feet to three thousand forty-four point four three square feet. Uh, we've provided the locations of all the mechanical equipment and all the mechanical equipment is located in a compliant location. Um, we've relocated the fence.
And how far from the property boundary, the mechanic?
Um, the minimum. Is. Twenty-seven point four seven feet.
So all all further away at. As in a response to the request of the board to address that concern?
Yes. Uh, we've. The fence in the rear of the property has been relocated to be more than fifty feet from the water. The long previous coverage has been reduced from twenty-five point nine four percent to twenty-four point one two percent. And this is, uh. As numbers, twenty-seven thousand seven hundred seventy-three point nine zero square feet to twenty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty point six six square feet.
Okay. Variances, what's what's left in terms of relief being requested?
We are requesting relief for the floor area of the house and the. Four-foot fence within the front yard.
In addition to those changes, previously the applicant had agreed to consolidate the lots to prevent. Uh, any subdivision. Um, and to restrict any further subdivision. Uh, they agreed to re- to a restriction that the attic will remain as proposed and will not be converted to leasable space for rent. Uh, as any condition to a board approval. And the applicant agreed to restrict, but the proposed sports court building will not be used or converted to a garage. Uh, at the request of the board.
Or livable space?
The livable space. The oriented, the the opening doors that you raised the concern about reflecting into the neighbor's property are now. To the.
They face.
West side.
Yes.
Away from the neighbor.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any other changes that we want to address? And did you have the opportunity to review CME's letter of September second with the? Review of the updated plans?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, can you address, uh? Any open comments that Mr. Rizzo stored testimony of from you as the engineer?
So pertaining to the. Uh, soilborne labels, I will make those more clear on our plan, those locations.
Yeah, you don't need to go through, do you, will you? I mean, they're they're simple, would you imply with all the technical comments under number five?
Yes.
And then, other than that, the sports court, as you mentioned, was. Moved further off the side of property line. Um, there was testimony in the last hearing about a landscaping plan. Is that something you plan to provide as part of compliance?
Yeah, we we've agreed, um. That there'll be a landscaping plan and soundproofing measures subject to your review and approval. For the sports court, that was an issue that was raised for the noise issue. So we've stipulated that we'd agree to there, to that. Uh, the soil test that you just indicated, we've agreed to. Uh. Infiltration rates, all of all of those things, you guys will technically take care of. And I guess the last one was outside agency approvals, we just, we just got Catherine.
Yes.
So that's now in. So it's, um. I think that addresses everything that you've raised. Just. Okay.
Can I ask, what you picture behind you is accurate, uh, is that a reflection with all the changes or is that? Does that incorporate everything you described?
Yes.
So why don't, why don't we, why don't we describe this, because we, I don't think we introduced this rendered one.
You want me?
Yeah, why don't you pass out the small ones so they can see them and then. Let's talk about this rendered. Exhibit.
This is this is to the buyer's changes.
Right. Well, you have the overall, but you don't have the colored one, so. We're going to, we can mark it, we can mark the colored one. Uh.
Eight twenty-nine?
Eight twenty-nine.
He pointed out the changes for the driveway as well.
Sure. You see this okay, you want us to move it or?
Now that I have this, that's great.
Yeah, everybody see this all right, you want us to try to relocate this?
I, where are you stood?
Okay. Then let's let's show the change to the driveway, just my initial question.
This area here on the house. Was recreated slightly and then moving in the four court building over here. That's where those numbers are.
Thank you.
Are you okay with the driveway configuration, the way it uh, kind of skews a little bit, um? Is if you wanted to to change that at a later date, you're adding disturbance, except for two of the threshold. So is that something that I'm comfortable with now?
Yes.
So this is, this this exhibit represents, uh, the cha- all of the changes that you just gave a narrative on.
Yes.
Correct. And I think it's, uh. If the board has any questions after looking at this exhibit, we're happy to try to respond.
I'm not sure if this is directed best to the engineer or professional, is there any screening or fencing proposed around the mechanicals that's, uh, on the. East side? Just out there on the lawn in the area, am I going to get that correctly?
I think our landscaping plan was designed to screen and buffer that and we could. We're going to submit that and it'll be subject to Mr. Rizzo's review and approval.
From both the river and the side property.
Yeah, thank you. Can you identify the? As I understand it from the beginning of the testimony, that there is. A single setback variance, which would be required if we were looking at this in accordance with the R forty standards? Can you identify whether that?
Yeah, this setback here on the left side.
That little corner.
Is that, I believe, twenty-two point nine six and it would be twenty-five for the R forty.
Sure.
Um, this setback here is twenty-two point nine six and it would have to be twenty-five, means R forty.
And and you want to get a chance to look at it?
Yeah, I agree, the the R forty, um, they don't need it because of the side property line and because of whatever.
But otherwise, just to be clear, this lot does conform to all the R forty standards for upsown.
Other than those two.
Yeah, so so the decision to not pursue upzoning is a decision they made, it is a matter of not buying, but buying.
But we wanted. We wanted. This home as originally presented and now as redesigned based on everybody's. Efforts. Uh, and and this is what we're seeking, we're hoping that you'll consider and approve.
But the upzoning doesn't apply unless you conform to everything that would be here, so there's no question that you're you're deviating, I just wanted to understand. Were you satisfied or not satisfied with your, your four standards?
Right, it's just, it's just that one corner in the size of the home.
So I make sure I understand. The. Where the house, it's sort of crowned, right, you're in about a twenty-three foot elevation from ground.
Yes.
Okay, and then it drops off to the pump.
And yes, I'm.
The roof line thirty-five feet higher than twenty-three, right? That's over here, the, the ash, from the water. Twenty-three feet up and then thirty-five to the top, correct?
Um.
Not the chimney, but the top of the roof.
Building heights measured from average existing grade, so I'm just double checking what our average existing grade is.
I think I gave that to you at twenty-three. You you confirm real name?
It's twenty-three oh five and they're not adding, um. We're raising the grade a little bit around the house, but not more than. Four. So it still sits about twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Yes.
And then the height of the building?
About thirty-five feet above that, correct?
Uh, I don't, I don't draw that conclusion one way or the other, I just wanted to know if you're interested. Did you, and again, I was going to say a lot of things and apologize if I'm wrong, did you go through the reduction of the patio area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, we'd like to bring our planner up to kind of summarize. Uh, the application, the relief, the justification. And then I'll, I'll conclude and, um. Ask that you proceed.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Barbara Allen. I was previously sworn in, um, I am a, this is a review of professional planner and an AICP. I've worked with Beacon Planning since two thousand and eight and I've been licensed, actually, this is my ten year anniversary, this year. Uh, so to walk through the application, I know we've had a lot of discussions about it and I know there's concerns regarding the upzoning and the one side yard setback. Um, I do want to note, uh, the building, uh, the front yard setback is two hundred and forty-two feet, um, where. Uh, fifty feet is required and the rear to the bulkhead is a hundred and six feet where thirty feet is required. So there are substantial setbacks to the front and rear of this building, so I know there's concerns regarding the massing. But we have to remember that this massing isn't up against these two property lines. And when we talk about the side yard setbacks, um, yes, there's a pinch point at the garage that is a lower. Structure, so its max height is twenty feet and that pinch point is only at the corner, that setback increases. And we, when we talk about the R forty district, I know that, um, it would require a combined, uh, side yard setback. Of sixty-six point five feet where the applicant is offering, uh, seventy-nine point nine four. So yes, there is a one pinch point, but overall we've actually exceeded the standards associated with the R forty district for the side yard setbacks. With respect to the, I know there's also concerns regarding the sports court and its setback and possible noise, um, as was related. By your professional, uh, the accessory buildings actually have a smaller set side yard setback requirement. And he was asking for one that's associated with an outdoor court, so this is an indoor structure and the applicant has this. Has agreed to provide some soundproofing to help the neighbors, but I also want to note that this, this garage doors along the front of this. Are oriented to the inside of the property. So when they're open, the sound isn't reflected, isn't going to the rear to the neighbor, it's coming into the property. And those garage doors face. The garage doors of the actual garage, so it's, it's kind of being contained in the site, it's not, um, not that I am a. An acoustical engineer, but I did want to point out that these are both into the site and not towards the neighbors. Um, with respect to the massing of the home, um, the applicant has taken steps to reduce that. The size and the feel of that, um, as we stated, the second floor portions of it were brought in. Uh, there was open covered balconies proposed to help soften the appearance. I know there was concerns along the river frontage and that facade, uh, but there is, the first floor has a covered porch. And there are variations, so it's not like there is just a solid wall that someone is looking at from the river. Uh, there is variations and again. That building is set back a hundred and six feet from the bulkhead, so, uh. So, uh, not from the property line or from the riparian grant, but a hundred and six from the bulkhead. So the massing is somewhat diminished visually by just the distance that the home is from the rear property line. Um. With respect to the square footage of the home, I, I know there are questions regarding, um, other homes in the neighborhood. The problem I ran into, and I'm sure that you will agree, is that tax records don't necessarily conform. To what your standard is for what's measured for habitable floor area. So doing an apples to apples comparison is very difficult. Uh, particularly when you get to second floors, vaulted ceilings, things of that nature. So instead I looked at the tax records. We looked at what the first floor was measured out. So what is the footprint of the home? And so, um. Uh, I would love to be able to say that I could tell you about one hands, but unfortunately their tax record is too new and it hasn't been updated with that information. Um. If we were to look at. Fifteen hands. Which is block seventy-eight, lot eleven. Uh, the first floor has a square footage of five thousand four hundred and seventy square feet. Um, I'd like to note that our first floor square footage, uh, is four thousand two hundred and seventy-five square feet. Uh, when looking at, um. Uh, seventy-two Pine Cove Road. So these are properties, uh, that are located to the. East. I want to say east, no, it's a little bit skewed. Um, seventy-two Pine Cove Road has a first floor. Um, a four thousand six hundred sixty-eight square feet. And seventy-eight Pine Cove, which is block seventy-eight, lot thirteen point oh three, has a first floor, uh, area of four thousand one hundred and seven square feet. Um, so there is.
The tax records, how much you're looking at?
Yes.
So the tax records actually give you a footprint for the first floor?
They say first floor area, so it's not a perfect like how we would measure. But usually they give a. A livable first floor.
So you're. You're, you concluded that in looking at the total square footage is listed in the tax records that it's not indicative of the size of those homes? And that the first floor in comparison to this first floor is a better place for us to look to try and figure out whether or not there is conformity to the neighborhood scheme?
Yes, because unfortunately with second floors, as we've run into with the thirty inches, it's not easy to really. Compare what that second floor square footage would count as. So particularly since some of these tax records may predate some of your zoning changes with regard to how it was calculated. So at least at the first floor, you could have a footprint of what would, understand of what's going on.
Right. So do any of the tax records that you look at, um, show you a house that is, um, as large or in excess of what this is?
Uh. Including the second story?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Um. So. Do you mind if I grab my cellphone? Do some quick math?
Do you need a tablet?
Yeah, I'll do that on my phone.
One.
Okay.
And, and did you finish with the footprint that you wanted to identify for us?
Uh, so I was going to name a few others that are in the community. These ones were close. To the subject property, uh, but other properties such as, uh, five sixty-eight Ridge Road. Uh, block sixty-seven, lot thirty-five has a four story of five thousand one hundred and seventy square feet. Uh, eighty-five Grange Avenue, uh, block twenty-two, lot forty-eight, has a first floor of four thousand one hundred and fifty-six. And, um, one ninety-one Lewis Lane, block seventy-nine, lot twenty-two, has a first floor story of four thousand seven hundred fifty-six square feet.
Is it safe to assume you comb the entire town and then you've identified footprints that are larger than your footprint and we should assume that that's all there are? Or did you have specific properties that you were looking at?
No, I. So I did look, um. So tax cards are a little bit tricky because when you pull down the summary, it only gives the overall. It doesn't give the first floor. So you have to go tax record by tax record. So I wasn't able to go through the entire community and compare all footprints.
Why? So do we know this, do we know the zoning of anything of those properties?
Yes, um. I'm gonna go in reverse if that's okay.
Yeah.
Quick question before you. The, the last house you mentioned, a four thousand square foot, I think, Grange?
Yes.
The multi-story?
Good, so, um. And the last one was one ninety-one Lewis Lane.
Sorry. Four thousand, so the first floor.
First floor and it says. Yes, it says the upper story is four thousand three hundred sixty-four square feet. And it says a lot, and it says.
Oh, sorry.
I mentioned to him that that's the address of the house on the point that everyone was obsessed with the last meeting.
Oh, okay. Uh, so then. Eighty-five. Uh, eighty-five Grange Avenue has a second floor of three thousand four hundred seventy-six square feet. And it is located on a property that has two point nine five acres. Um.
An acreage is usable on the, does work.
That's why it's, that's why it's a hard comparison. Um. Uh, the total, if we add up with how they calculate it. Uh, the total square footage would be seven thousand six hundred thirty-two square feet. Um. Uh, just for the home.
Is it safe to say, assuming that some of these whole control, they're not taking advantage of attic bonus space or the basements are probably a little less efficient in the south?
It's on.
Or that almost safely assumed is how the tax record, you're not, well, fuzzy is probably.
It's, it's fuzzy because it's, uh, you know, the home that was on this property before, uh, it was demolished. It had a taller height. It was like, what, approximately thirty-eight feet? So I don't know if that attic. Was usable. So it's, it's not clear. That's why first I focused on the footprint. And then if you'd like, we could discuss the second floor, but I think anything else gets a little bit more dicey with how they were used.
How many, how many addresses did you identify, folks?
Uh, I have tax records, excluding hands, one, two, three, two. Um, six.
Okay, so the six properties that you've identified have, uh, footprints that are similar to this. And I think that you would like us to conclude that those houses are similar to this and so. Loosely speaking, this house won't be the biggest house, very even, those houses are equally sized. Is that, is that fair?
More or less, yes.
Although, although acreage and zoning and smaller features vary a little bit on the edges.
Correct.
Can you refresh my memory of what the existing house was, what the tax record said to work that structure? I think the overall house was something.
I believe that's accurate. Um.
So there's actually input to on the attic and some of that other stuff on that tax record for the, the house that was, uh, knocked down. So I think we concluded last time it lived to about twenty-one percent larger than what the tax record is. Right, so whatever it was on there, eighty-eight hundred, it lived like a, you know, whatever that is, eleven thousand and change.
We, we, we testified at these July meeting that it was eighty-eight forty-one.
Got it. So then I think figured out that it lived to about twenty-one percent larger. So, so this house, if you, you look at all the. Space, right, and you net out the sports court, it's gonna live like almost fourteen and a half thousand feet, right? And it's, you know, whatever, whatever that refers, uh. You know, sub eight thousand, you know, apples to apple, right? So it's gonna live dramatically larger because there's all this other space that can be utilized or that, you know, previous older. Homes that didn't have the advantage that, that they have with, you know, more efficient basement, right? If you look at the basement here, it's basically the exact same square footage as the top floor. It's super efficient. Right?
Um, yeah, I would agree, but it's, it's possible that older homes still have full footprint basements. Um.
It is, but they're unlikely to be used like that, right? And I think you also have the points where I think the point I'm trying to make is that, not to adult what you're saying, but it's. The square footage is counted and what's going to live, it's gonna, you know, we count sports floor, right? This house lives at just under sixteen thousand feet, right? It's pretty insignificant. I would venture a guess and say most of the other house you identified don't live anywhere close to sixteen thousand feet zoning or acreage policy.
Oh. Some of the homes, well, yes, you, we, there are older homes in the sample, but, um, for example, um. Five sixty-eight Ridge Road was built in two thousand eighteen. So it's not an aberration that it's just limited to the older homes.
Well, I will.
Uh, but it's in the R forty district. It's still. Within the residential district that we can ask, compare this property to.
Sure, but this is still the R thirty, right? I guess that's the. Jumping back to your, your promise about the question board, what that, um, so the proposed house is what, four thousand two hundred and seventy-six?
Uh, four thousand two hundred and seventy-six on the first floor.
Okay, so again, yeah, what the old house was on the first floor.
Let me, I'm gonna try and pull up the tax card. For some reason, it's not within my, um.
If you don't have, it was just more curiosity, just. The house was very symmetrical, so it's probably very similar to the. You have the. Eighty-eight forty-one or everything. Forty-four hundred. I think it's probably.
Those are two or three stories, you know, that's.
Three, was three, uh. But presumably that's where it would.
Probably eight hundred divided by three.
So pursuant to the tax card. Uh, the, uh, the first floor was three thousand two hundred nineteen. The upper story is two thousand eight hundred sixty-two and then it showed a, a half story. A two thousand seven hundred sixty.
Yeah. It's sort of, so it's a three-story building. So. So these. Comparable four thousand. Three hundred square foot first floors. One of those potentially, I mean, this is still just one of the aerial images that Mr. Bruno was alluding to before. But that four thousand three hundred square foot house could potentially be like a sixty-five inch square, right? So, so would in fact, if you were looking at it the way you all look at it from the ground. It would be a sixty-five foot wide house and then that's the, that's the open space that it would take up. Whereas this forty-three hundred square feet. Takes up. Over a hundred and twenty feet from one side.
And I would.
So, so do you feel that that's a fair comparison?
I feel that comes into a lot of architecture. I mean, you could do a sixty-five by sixty-five house, but would you want to see a sixty-five?
I'm not asking that question. I'm asking the question.
So a lot of.
It's always air light and open space, which is one of the main things that we're talking about here, especially with the. The overage on the, above the cap of square footage in the house. You could put that four thousand three hundred square foot first floor potentially in something that's sixty-five feet wide. And, and, and. Yet here we have it. Aggished in something that's. Hundred and twenty by.
One ten line.
Oh, one ten and, and diagonally across here, maybe a hundred thirty.
So.
Forty or so, so, so.
I have a.
Open space around this. It is. I mean, in the, the space that this takes up, just horizontally. Is, is two times. What some of these other forty-three hundred square foot first floors could potentially look like, right?
Well, wait, wait a minute. I, 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 go ahead.
Can I pass out the aerial that I passed out the first time? I'm not sure if you still have it with your packets.
This is previous to mine?
Yes.
And Mr. Shreedy, I, I, as you look at that, I, I don't think you can lose.
Eighty-ten.
You can do sight of the fact that the lot.
You can lose sight of the lot behind those hundred twenty-foot wide house, you know?
But, but the lot is, is, is more than three times over.
I'm not talking about the size of the lot, I'm talking about the size of that.
Well, in, in, in terms of size and scale, in other words.
This has nothing to do with scale because we're talking about a cap. So I'm not talking about a region.
Correct, but from, from a visual perspective, so for example. On a forty thousand square foot lot, which the R forty requires, you can put a sixty-nine hundred square foot home with to pie. That's gonna look a lot bigger. Than the home that we're putting on, the lot that's more than twice the lot area. So that's the point we've been trying to drive home, that yes, you have this maximum habitable floor. calculation, which caps the size of a home you can put on, on a property. But I don't, we, we're asking you to, don't lose sight of the fact that we've got so much acreage and, and we're so below your FAR, because I think.
Point of the cap is that there may be much larger lots. Where you could build a eighty thousand square foot home based on the ratio. And that's why we have a cap. So the whole point of this exercise.
So if. If I may jump back.
Yeah.
Uh, so if you.
Remember what the question was.
Uh, the. The dimensions of the home. So if you were to look at the area that I provided, you'll see that homes along this riverfront actually are. Kind of expansive towards the riverfront. So it's not an unusual shape that's being proposed. Um, it is common. And with respect to the cap, I do know, as you stated previously, that we're talking about light air and open space. So the applicant is giving very large front and rear setbacks. So it's off the property, it's off the water. A hundred and six feet to the bulkhead where thirty feet is required. And the side yard setbacks, although we have a pinch point, those side, that side yard setbacks are larger than that's required in the upzone of R forty. So your R forty district would require, um, setbacks of. Twenty-five feet and would permit, um. Twenty-five feet, uh, on the, on a lot with forty thousand square feet. So we are improving our side yard setbacks. They're increased over what's required in the R forty. So we're setback from our neighbors. Yes, we, yes.
Twenty-five foot side.
So. There's one, other than the pinch point, our combined side yard setbacks are seventy-nine point six four feet. Where only sixty-six point five feet would be required. So we did increase them. So we are respecting our side yards and our front and rear.
You handed this out. What, what did you want to tell us about this?
Uh, that was just to show that the building footprints along the waterfront. Are kind of elongated to take focus and be able to take advantage of the views of the waterfront. So they're not. They're not like square shaped.
So I know that you had, um, recited by lot and block, I think, the two neighboring houses. Can, can you just? For the purpose of comparison, because I, I do think that the comparison is, is relevant for sure. Can you take us from the house that's all the way on the left, which is the new one, I think at one hands? Then the next one, which is immediately to your.
Right, so.
And, and then maybe the two or three to the other side, like, like based on the tax cards, what are these houses in total? What, what, what's the assessment say the size of?
So the one.
Sorry, you're welcome to give me the footprint as well. If you think that's a better and safer, uh, frame of reference because it won't exist.
I would agree with that. Uh, the ones to the left, one hands, I do not have the information for the tax records having been updated, uh, to reflect it.
That's a good form of health anyway, right? Is that correct?
Well, she wouldn't necessarily know that, but we know that because that applicant came before us. They, they, then withdrew their application and the house is going up, so do people.
Uh, fifteen hands, which is the one, uh, right next to it, to the west of the subject property, has a first floor, um. Footprint of five thousand four hundred seventy square feet. And the upper story contains four thousand eight hundred and fifty-four square feet.
So can I just ask you about that? Because, um, is, is part of that footprint the garage?
Uh, the garage is actually listed, uh, separately as a detached garage. There's a, attached garage and a detached garage listed in the, um. Tax card. So I believe that garages are usually listed separately. Uh, when we go to seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight immediately adjacent to these.
Uh, yes. Yeah, um. It has a first floor of four thousand one hundred and seven square feet. Uh, the upper story is actually stated to be nine hundred ninety-five square feet. Um. And then seventy-two Pine Cove Road, which is the one immediately to the west of that. Um. Has a first floor square footage of four thousand six hundred sixty-eight square feet.
That's total?
Um. It's not actually giving me an upper story.
Does it give you square footage at all?
No, not for an upper story.
I think that's a lower slum. Things that's a lower slum house.
Okay, so, so working backwards then, the, the total square footage of the house, did you just mention is what number?
Uh, seventy-two Pine Cove. Uh seventy two Pine Cove Road, uh the the first floor, the first story is labeled four thousand six hundred sixty eight square feet.
And there is no second floor, and I assume the tax card gives you square footage, so we should assume it's forty one hundred square feet, same story?
It's four thousand six hundred sixty eight, I believe, one story.
Alright, so forty six hundred, the the next house moving backwards is the.
Seventy eight Pine Cove Road. Uh that is a um. First floor story is four thousand one hundred seven square feet. And it says the upper story is nine hundred ninety five square feet, it does note a cathedral ceiling. Um.
So the tax card says it's about five thousand square feet?
Yes.
I don't even think that's right. Variance was less than seven thousand square.
That might be pre renovation.
So that's why I was kind of limiting my initial review just to the.
Here's the problem, selectively working through some of the analysis that you think is relevant to us is fine. I'm trying to add context based on how I would look at it, just to make sure that I understand the context of what that provides. So we we know it's not five thousand, so we'll put an asterisk on that. The other one now immediately to your west.
Fifteen hands. Um it has a five thousand four hundred seventy square foot first floor and a four thousand eight hundred fifty four square foot second floor.
Ten thousand plus minus, also an eighty year old home, alright?
Yep.
It is an older home.
And and then and then we don't have the other one, but we know it's conforming, do we know what um uh one hand's the zone is, is that R forty?
Uh do not, I believe it's still R thirty, but I could be mistaken.
Yeah, that's right, I'm gonna take your word for it, so it's R thirty, so that means that house has got to measure fifty one hundred square feet, whatever given state use, but it's conforming.
Yep, I agree, R thirty.
Perhaps, maybe still.
Did it come before this board?
It did, and then they withdrew.
Uh I will say one hands is on a property that reportedly contains one point seven eight acres. Yeah, but uh our property is two point four or five five acres.
Still conforming to the cap.
I think what some of these other people here are trying to get at is, it's a it's a skinnier lot than some of these, right? And the one here to the west, it's an extremely old home, right, it probably predates the zoning code, it's probably a frank home, right, it's been added to. Over time, I'm sure, without the appropriate uh channels, and I think that's what. It's out of respect, but but what what is, is you have a conforming home over here, right, this same zone, maybe it's up zone, maybe it isn't, still. Much smaller, you have a home here that is probably eight years old, predating, you know, there are probably forty or fifty years, right? These two here, which the the numbers are on the line, so it's a hard. Not sure what to take from the idea.
Excuse me. Is Mister Payal behind us on it back there? There you are, Dave. What is the, do you know the square footage, your your revised house?
You saw me swear the test, wanting to give the board to be the period of all of your.
I do. Uh Dave Payal, P is Peter, A O L O, seventy eight Pine Cove Road, area. Our uh our above ground square footage is sixty nine ninety, just under the R forty uh limit, that was what our application was for, our our uh. I also understand the one hand's property be in excess of seven thousand square feet above ground and eight thousand below ground. So you're talking about a much bigger house than what it appears from Roar to the River. Um. Yeah, is that is that the question ball?
Yeah, yeah, that.
Specifically your house, but that.
Oh, sure, sixty nine ninety, thanks, cuz there's.
So the disconnect between your renovation and.
So one hand you understand is in excess of seven thousand square. Generally, and you understand that their basement is fifteen, I'm not. Yeah, okay, so that's that makes sense, um.
Thank you. Sorry, you're a spot dude.
Yeah, we're there, um. I just wanna make sure, let out everything.
Why don't why don't we try to summarize from a planning perspective, the board's justification to grant the relief that we're seeking?
So the the home proposed, and I understand there's a cap on square footage, uh but there is. The size of the parcel can help mitigate any perceived impacts by the scale of the home. Because it's on a much larger.
You're not talking about hardship, right?
No. Yes, so it presents a reinvestment in this property and scale that is. At least on the first floor, similar to homes in the area. I do understand some of those homes are older, but that doesn't mean they don't contribute to the character of the neighborhood. And how this home will continue that. Um as I said, the front and rear yard setbacks are far in excess of what's required. And we, besides the pinpoint pinch point at the garage, we meet, we exceed side yard setbacks. Uh for the R forty zone, so a home is not being overbuilt on the site. Uh it is appropriately scaled, and the architecture itself helps diminish any any concerns regarding. A McMansion or something that'll be visually intrusive along the waterfront. There are setbacks, there are balconies, there are overhangs, and the home itself, as I stated, is a hundred and six feet from the the bulkhead. Are there any additional questions I can answer?
That's how. How is exceeding the cap begin with? But exceeding it to the degree that you are. How does that benefit? The zoning ordinances and planning can vary.
Because the home is not being overbuilt, it's being appropriately scaled visually to the site, so.
But the cap was developed, understanding that. Separate from the cap, there's a ratio, and that's what controls it relative to the size of the site. And the cap just controls it relative to the sub period.
I understand, but there are homes along this waterfront, as I've stated, that have larger footprints, and I will be keeping in character with that. The, I understand there is a cap, however, the parcel is large enough that we're not. We're not scaling a home to the perfect size of the lot, the lot is. What, two and a half, three times the thing, we're not asking for that. Uh we are asking for additional space, uh and the lot can accommodate it, it's not. And I understand that you disagree.
Wait, I'm I'm just asking. Doesn't the fact that there's a cap and the fact that the the governing body hasn't changed it? Say anything to the the fact this has nothing to do with the scale of the property itself?
I don't think the ordinance can address every situation within the community, which is why we are here. There's always gonna be, there's properties that have unique features, and this. This is one that is extremely oversized for the district.
The unique feature is not a hardship.
And not all variances need to be granted pursuant to a hardship.
Right, so, but when they're not, there should be some benefit to. Zone plan and the ordinance. Exceeding the cap. And exceeding it to the degree that you are. How is that a positive for the zone plan in in Farid and and?
Because it's a continuation of the visual along the riverfront, there was very much concerns about how this home would look. And if we look to homes on either side, they are wider along the waterfront. And so this is a continuation of that configuration.
So I I view the positive and negative as working it, and the idea is the positive beats outweigh the negative when you work on flexible city. The trouble that I have with this is that the lot is screened. And so whenever the lot is screened, you have an opportunity to fully reform. There's nothing you're working around, there's no accommodation of trying to preserve something. With regard to the legislative intent and whether or not, because the way I think about a C two is, if the council were here tonight, and this were presented to them. They would agree that the zone plan, as represented by your plans for this home. Is consistent with what they think would be appropriate if they zone just for this particular lot. And that's the way I think about it. But the legislative history in Fairhaven, there's been no change to that cap in twenty years. What there has been is there has been a a concerted effort to provide flexibility for larger lots. By doing a couple of things. One thing is to create this opportunity to construct in the basement. One hand is a terrific example, they came in, their first hearing was an awful lot like the first hearing here, they left and they never came back. I am not surprised to find out that they found a way to uise up to eight thousand square feet of subterranean space. In order to not have to get a variance, because that's exactly what the ordinance is telling them to do. The other thing that we've done is we've granted the three third story space, so as long as it's at one third and qualifies as an attic the way that we've outlined it. You get all of that for free, the basement's free, the attic's free. On top of that, we implemented the upzone ordinance. I was a part of it, it made a lot of sense for this applicant to know. That they weren't limited at fifty one hundred square feet because they were in R thirty, if they had a larger lot that informed to R forty. But we don't have an R fifty zone or an R sixty zone. The limits that have been set by council have been in place an awful long time, I struggled with the conclusion. That the size of the lot, and that's really all I understand that it had, you do have setbacks running fast, but. How could they not be, given the depth of the lot? Your side yard setbacks are effectively what the requirements would be in an R forty when you're this oversized, but not remarkable. There's just nothing about that. That leads me to believe that if the mayor were here tonight. That what he would say is that this is the appropriate sized house for this lot, because there's been no focus. In trying to accommodate Mister Bruno's view of this, which is really that. The ordinance is a little silly, in that it creates this artificial cap. I just don't see that, is there something that I'm missing that you could help me understand, where you conclude? That that is the appropriate way to see this particular C two variant?
Uh I believe, as you've mentioned, there's not an R fifty, there's not an R sixty, so the the community hasn't been able. Or, I'm not sure, the reasoning behind it, but they haven't um. Addressed these types of parcels that are larger, they have limited everything to an R forty. Without recognizing that there are different characters, uh and there are different lot sizes that exceed that um. And so when when we look at a, I'm sorry, when we look at a forty thousand square foot lot. Your maximum is six thousand nine hundred square feet. And the zone, therefore your ordinance envisions that a forty thousand square foot lot. Visually can accommodate a six thousand nine hundred square foot home. The zone, then, it doesn't permit, it doesn't continue that logic. To the larger lot sizes.
True.
So when we say it's appropriately scaled, what we're saying is that visually you had in, the zone had anticipated. A sixty nine thousand square foot home and a forty thousand square foot lot, visually, this would be similar. And it's not as big, because we didn't scale it up with respect to uh. Lot covered um floor area ratio or anything like that, so. Is that?
It it does, and and I appreciate the response, I I think this is the heart of the matter, I really do, I think the entire thing turns on this. And I think that when you look at this lot. The lack of context, because it is so large, in Fairhaven, where we have very few lots that are this large. It's kind of hard to grasp, but we can look at R five. And with regard to R five in Farid, and that requires that you can be fifty feet wide, and you have a. You have no no less than five thousand square feet, so fifty by a hundred. At least fifty percent of the R five lots in Farid are considerably larger than that, most of them by fifty percent. So they're fifty feet deeper than a hundred feet. The ordinance is, the ordinance does not say in R five. That you go to twenty two hundred, but if you have that excess lot, you can build three thousand. It 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 intentionally does not, and so when I apply that logic here, I'm left to assume. That it was intentional, and it's not a lack of zoning for this type of lot. It is a an overall scheme that basically says they're only gonna get this big. And to the extent that you have more property. The solutions that I've mentioned before, the upzoning, the opportunity to come in for a variance, for sure. Um I think are out there, but I don't know that just the size of the lot alone.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
In the R five zone, would you be able also to upzone?
Uh yeah.
So there is that option for that home or that property.
You go one zone, the same way you can go from R thirty to R forty, you can go from R five to R seven five, and you can go to thirty twenty. If you fully comply with the requirements of the R seven five lot size. And your proposed residence completely conforms to the R seven five standard, short the front yard setback, we don't need to get into that.
But what I.
You're talking about are like fifty feet wide and three hundred and twenty feet deep.
Well, you're not gonna upzone on a fifty foot wide lot, cuz R seven five requires more width, if it's sixty.
But there is that option.
There is.
And if someone were coming in to you with a lot size that met even above. The R seven five, they would probably discuss that zone with you, and what is permitted in that other zone at that lot area.
You're still thirty percent above that. We actually direct them to do that, because the fact is that our community standards are established in 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 table seat. That's it, um that's the standards as we understand them, and so as we look at what you're presenting, we have to reflect on that. And so since there isn't anything above R forty, I think the context of that is at least how I'm looking at what you're proposing. And there is no relief. When you're triple the size of the minimum lot, and in an R five, if you were making the same argument. We could have three twenty two hundred square foot homes, and therefore we are not asking for sixty four hundred. That that nine sixty six hundred, we're only asking for thirty six hundred. And if they had scraped the lot and they were putting it in. And what what would we do? But we we don't see that.
So what I'm saying is that, let's say you had a five thou- uh a fifteen thousand square foot lot in a five thousand square foot lot, in a five thousand square foot zone.
Yeah, fifteen thousand?
Yeah, uh but, yeah, fifteen thousand, it was three times the size.
Yeah, right, comparable to that.
Then you would go up, you would say that you were allowed to upzone one, but chances are the applicant will come in. And show you the zoning regulations controlling a fifteen thousand square foot lot. And say, we need X, Y, and Z.
Sure, they would, they they absolutely would, and there's lots on here, I'm sorry, then.
But we are not afforded that, because your your ordinance has not addressed it.
No, you're.
Yes, but as I was saying, the R five. If it was three times larger, they wouldn't present you the R seven five, they would go up another one that considered that fifteen thousand square foot lot.
Yeah, part of the problem though, I I I hear you, and that they would make that argument, but the lead from seven five to R ten, it's just two hundred additional square feet. And 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 the point that that gets at is that there is a consistency to the community scheme, and I think you're hearing a lot of it from now. I think there is a desire inside of these ordinances for homes to be consistent to the neighborhood, and I I I. I'm actually trying to get at your planning, I'm not trying to preach to you, I I. I I I accept your arguments that there are homes in Farid that are larger. I accept that there are homes in your direct proximity that are similar in size and scale, I accept that, because only that's true. I think there's other factors to be tied into it, and I think I've shared with you what my concerns are about that.
I understand, and I do wanna reiterate that. With this respect to the scale of homes in the immediate area, visual continuity is a consideration for the board.
Mr. Chairman, I I'd I'd like to uh. Sum up, because I have some points I'd like to make. That go to the heart of this issue, and I think it's important that the board give that some consideration. I mean, are you done with your planning?
Were there any additional questions for me?
No.
Thank you so much.
So I mean, we 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 we've been arguing uh the importance of floor area ratio uh. We'll continue to argue that, Mr. Shreedy's pointed out the importance of your your caps. And uh. I'm gonna ask the board to to. Try to have an open mind as I make some of these arguments, because I'm not looking to argue with you for the point of arguing, I'm I'm looking to argue with you. To try to convince you that you've got more discretion. To consider the floor area ratio when you consider this variance, and not just the habitable floor. Uh limitation for this property, and I'm gonna explain why I believe that to be true. Your habitable floor area uh caps. Uh were are pretty unique. Um, that case went all the way up to the Supreme Court. Uh, it, it related to a property on William Street, had to do with a five thousand square foot lot. And the developer got a subdivision uh for two seventy-five hundred square foot lots. Your cap was twenty-two hundred square feet, so the maximum you could allow is twenty-two hundred square feet. And the developer wanted to do, uh, he wanted to take advantage of the floor area ratio, and I think the houses he wanted to do was twenty-seven hundred square feet. Uh, he couldn't reconcile how you can't look at the floor area ratio and have it overrule the cap, and the cap should be unlawful because the municipal land use law is set up that the floor area ratio takes into effect how big you can go on a lot if it's bigger than, than the zone. That, that case went all the way up to the Supreme Court, vice court in the state. Twenty twenty, uh, twenty oh three or twenty oh two, something like that. It was Borough of Rumson v. Borough of, uh, Rumson, uh, Rumson Builders versus Fairhaven. The court found, and they, the court wrestled with it. All, all the three courts wrestled with it, and it finally got to the, got to the Supreme Court. And the court, the argument that the plaintiff made was this, this is inconsistent with what the land use law provides. It just come off the, the heels of the Manalaven case where towns were trying to take out unusable land in terms of uh, good coverages, that if it's wetlands, you can't count it for density and so forth. And court overturned the ta- towns trying to do that. So it was, it was along the same lines that you were trying to do more than the municipal land use allowed you to do. And the court, the, the, the borough said, well, wait a minute. We don't want McMansions on our smaller lots. We don't want these lots overbuilt. These are small five thousand square foot lots. We want people in our community to be able to buy these homes and live here. And if we don't have this control, our homes will, will no longer be affordable. Court found that argument to be lawful and, and valid, and a, and a valid reason for upholding your law, your cap. But it related to one core issue, which is you want to preserve affordable housing for people of lesser monetary means in your community. And in fact, you cited borough employees that you didn't want to have borough employees not be able to live here because people are overbuilding on these lots, and they found that to be a lawful reason. Now you look at our lot. That's nothing to do with affordable housing. In fact, only the richest of us all can afford these waterfront lots. These are among the most valuable properties in the entire state. That logic doesn't apply to this property. Now, you've carried over the cap as if it should. But I would argue for you, with you, that it's unlawful. I'm not saying you don't have it and you don't have to follow it because it's your ordinance, but I don't think it's lawful as to this property because you don't have the, the zoning justification to say, we need to have a cap here because we want affordable housing for this property. You don't have the same arguments here that were valid on the five thousand square foot lot. That's why I've been asking you to take a look at the floor area ratio that your, your governing body put in the ordinance. That's fifteen percent. We're half of that. This, this house is appropriately sized for this property based on what your ordinance says. And but for this arbitrary cap that you guys came up with, and I don't know how you came up with it for waterfront properties, we wouldn't be sitting here. We'd have a conforming application. So I understand you have a cap, and I understand that you have laws to uphold, and that's your job. But when we ask for variance, we ask you to understand the legal arguments and the justification for it. And in this instance, you heard a lot of testimony about the planning support for it. You could, you could upzone to forty thousand square feet and put, and subdivide the property into two lots and put two sixty-nine hundred square foot homes here, which would be much more intrusive than the one home that we're putting here on this over a hundred thousand square foot property. So I'm asking you to, to consider that in your deliberations that it's justified for this large lot. I understand the cap is important to you guys. I, I get it. But I don't think it should be as important for these larger lots because this is a unique property. The cost of construction is a whole nother ballgame on these properties. The cost of acquiring the property is a whole nother level. Has nothing to do with affordable housing. This is affluent people that are very successful that have the opportunity to live here and bring a great ratable to your town. And I don't think you should discourage it, especially when you've had the input that you've had and all of your concerns have been addressed the best we can. We've made almost thirty changes since the original design, which we thought was magnificent. All in response to the comments that you guys had. And I understand we haven't gotten all the way for certain of you. But based on what we just talked about and the purpose of that habitable, uh, maximum habitable floor area where, where originally originated, which on small lots and trying to make sure that residents of this town can stay here and not be McMansioned out of it, which was a valid reason and the court found that, you don't have that here. So I'm, I'm asking you to consider all the facts here. The fact that you can put two lots with sixty-nine hundred square foot homes, which doesn't make any sense here. The fact that, that the applicant is giving up any opportunity to subdivide and restricting this property to one lot. The fact that we tried to address all of your comments, to try to accommodate and come up with a great plan that we all can be proud of. And my client really wants to live in town. And he is doing his darndest to try to make a plan that they love, that you can love, and that this, this board can approve. So we're asking you to please consider all the changes that we made, please consider all the planning arguments that we made. Please consider the, the legal argument that I've made in distinguishing this property from the R five uh properties where, where it is a valid reason, and the court supported that. This is a little different. This is not about affordable housing on this property. This is about doing the appropriate scaled home for this property. And because we have a larger property, we can do it a little bit bigger and still make it magnificent and still smaller than what it would be if we subdivided and put two sixty-nine hundred square foot homes there. So I'm asking you to consider that in your deliberations, and we're asking you to please approve this application this evening.
Shrein, I'm not trying to needle you, but is the, isn't the Rumson Estates case effectively about floor ratio and no cap?
No, it's okay.
Well, no, that, that, it, it's about, the, the plaintiff argued it should be about the floor area ratio because that's the scheme on the municipal land use law. But the court found that, no, uh, this is a valid reason for having a cap. The, the desire to have affordable housing and not force people to buy McMansions and, and get pushed out of town is a valid zoning reason. And for that reason, the court agreed to uphold your ordinance.
And so in surrounding towns, there's no square footage caps in their ordinances? If they don't have caps in Little Silver and Rumson?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know. But this, this, I've been to a lot of towns. This is the only town I see it. And, and this is, this is the only town where you don't really reconcile floor area ratio. What do you do with floor area ratio? You ignore it.
No, we don't.
Well, of course you do, because we're half of what's permitted, and it doesn't matter.
Uh, no, I think, I think will matter. I think, I think, no, no, it's all, it's just, it's just, it's just low.
This was just closing, are you?
Yeah, it's just low side.
I think, I think when you can talk amongst yourselves.
And I love, listen, I love the house, right? My business is, right? I love, I love the house. I would, I would build it if I could, right? So it's nothing against the uh the monetary value of that. And, and I, and I recognize how much it costs to not only acquire this, but, but build it, right? I recognize it more acutely than you may realize. The various pieces that Mr. Shibetti's, you know, is getting very emotional about is that there, there are guardrails to protect it against exceeding certain pieces of development in different situations, right? So perhaps the lot was configured differently, maybe you would hit a different cap. So there, there are guardrails and it's framework built for that piece, right? I wanna, I wanna give you just some thoughts of where, where, how I feel about it. I think.
Why don't we hold that for the board to comment?
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't opened to the public yet. We haven't, you know, the public, yeah. We'll fly a little in the direction into, I, 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 I just wanna, Mr. Bruno, I just wanna explain to you that in the R ten zone, if you have a hundred by a hundred lot, which is fairly standard in River Oaks, you have both a thirty-two twenty cap and you have a twenty-eight point two eight floor area ratio limitation. So even though you can build to the thirty-two twentieth cap, the floor area ratio brings you down to twenty-eight hundred square feet. The idea behind it is that the floor area ratio is supposed to keep things in check. You have this cap and the floor area ratio is supposed to identify when you have an issue with the larger density. And I understood that the material element in the Rumson Estates case was the application of floor ratio as a D variance, requiring a super majority of the board. We can leave all that for another time. Um, I think that your point is well taken with the fact that it was litigated and that the substantive arguments addressed by the borough to the court were focused in large part with the vulnerability, and your argument is that that shouldn't apply here. I, I think that all that's valid.
Correct.
Um, I'd like to open to the public. So are any members of the public that have any questions or comments with regard to the crop study?
Uh, Dave Palo again, seventy-eight Pine Cove Road, PA.
Yeah.
Um, I did want to, I feel like I wish I had a joke here. Um, I did want to quickly offer support for the applicant and the application. Um, uh, I, I don't want subdivision and McMansions on the lot next to me. I only really just thought of that in the last five minutes. Um.
They'd be mansioned, then.
Sorry?
It's occurred to me that they'd be mansioned, not McMansioned.
Um, first and foremost, the, the plan compared to the homes previously there, it centers everything in the lot. And that's, and in my mind, that creates the light air in open space that I think we all seek. And from my perspective, that is the primary kind of benefit to, from my side. Uh, personally, Mr. McDonald's has been very communicative and accommodating. Um, you know, examples would be sports courts, uh, mechanicals being moved, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I do think the landscaping plan is extensive and dense, and as a former Shetree guy, I appreciate that. Um, sports court, I, I think that generally, I think anybody in the neighborhood would prefer an indoor uh version of the sports court as opposed to outdoors. So from a neighbor perspective, I think that's, that's a plus to be considered. Um, I think uh precedent with one hand is kind of interesting. Um, I think that Mr. McDonald's lot is, is considerably bigger too. And I think you're kind of, I think the above ground square footages are comparable with seven thousand towards the seventy-eight hundred roughly for the primary structure. Um, then I think Dr. Law first part from last meeting, um, regarding kind of the aesthetics from the river. Um, I think he made a really good counterpoint about, you know, things fitting in, um, from if you were going past it and you look at the different houses that are on the river. Uh, I think the width, uh, I think my house would actually be wider than the proposed. I don't actually know what the number is online, but um, my, my lot is more narrow. Um, and I think I would be wider than their proposed uh house. So stand, looking at the two next to each other, they would be very comparable, um, or match at least. And I think, um, just in general, I think the, the application, uh, it beautifies the neighborhood and neighborhood, and I'm, I'm very happy to support it. So.
Really many questions, Mr. Palo?
No.
Any other members of the public have any questions or comments?
Hello?
Well, I swear it's necessary to get the point of order, be the truth, the whole truth, the government, the truth.
I guess.
You're Shetree's director.
Jackie Santos, ninety-two Pine Cove Road.
Spell your last name, please.
S A N T O S.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you live in one of the houses we've been talking about today? On Pine Cove? Are you on the water or are you down?
I'm, I'm right next to Dave, so I'm, I took part of my property. Uh, I'm on the east.
So, so we were talking about yours with the, uh, with planner as being the easterly, Eastermost property on this house.
Yes, sorry, I didn't hear that. It was hard to hear the back.
Are you on the water or are you south?
I am just south, so.
I don't think it was one of the ones.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. So our, our, uh, our backyard basically, um, we're kind of sandwiched between the two properties, between the applicant and Dave.
So you're ninety-two?
I believe it's thirteen oh six.
Yes.
They bought Dave's property.
Ninety-two? Ninety-two is your address? Yes.
The pale, it's more or less.
Got it. Okay. Um, so just a couple of questions. Um, one, I mean, I, I think the application looks great. I think the house looks great. It is a big lot. Um, it, it looks very pretty, um, so I have no problem with that. I have a couple of questions about the sport court and the noise mitigation, and I know you had mentioned something, I guess, in your letter about um, identifying soundproof materials for the sports court building. Is that something that's going to be forthcoming at some point?
What, what it actually is hasn't been identified, other than that it would be provided. It's a resolution compliance.
Okay.
So it'd be soundproofing, the building, which, which does have three garage doors facing to the, to west. And then there's a landscape plan, which sounds like it's developed, but we haven't seen it yet. Um, and that would include a vegetative buffer screen, I feel like evergreen trees, um, so that the visuals would be, we just um the property directly to the east and I guess your property as well, just to further sound.
Yeah, so we, our, our property wouldn't necessarily be looking at the court, but it will be hearing it. So I guess my only comment would be, um, I know you had mentioned, um, specific attention to the vegetative buffer between the proposed court building and lot thirteen oh seven, which is Dave's lot. I'd really like to see also some attention for us and even the home on the other side in Malus, which are, they are, um, twenty-five hands grown.
On the west side of the property?
Yes, because I, I, I know she couldn't be here tonight, but I know she had some concerns with garage doors opening. Yes, they will be opening to the other garage, but pickleball's noisy. I mean, it's, whether it's indoors, outdoors, it's a sound that carries. I play it. It's fun. I like it. You know, I'm not saying we don't want the court, but I feel like we just really should be taking some specific measures and, um, just some research on how we can make this so it's enjoyable for everyone, the people playing and the neighbors around.
I think, I think, uh, if this board were to approve this, the applicant stipulated that they would move soundproofing subject to Mr. Rizzo's approval. And we have a very robust landscaping plan, but they would certainly take into consideration the buffer with your property to further try to address the comment that we made. Uh, those types of comments that the applicants agreeable to enhancing it subject to Mr. Rizzo's reviews, if this board will.
I think, and then my only other question, the fencing, um, on the uh, I think on the recent plan, which, again, it was hard for me to see it, but is it a four-foot fence all around the front? So currently there's a six-foot fence along the front border. Is that changing to four feet or is that staying at six feet?
Um, so the testimony was that the fence in the front between two side property lines is being replaced with a four-foot tall fence and then the fence in the rear is being replaced, but along the sides is remaining as it is today. So I don't know what it is today on the front. If it is six feet, it's being replaced to a, a shorter fence. It's four feet.
Oh, that's along the, the front entrances?
The south side.
Okay. Um, and then along the side, like we have a four-foot fence or basically four feet because of our pool. So there'll, there'll just be another fence on the other side of that or?
So, so Mr. Rizzo, I'm really not the right person to answer this question.
Okay.
There, there was a fence that was requiring of a variance, which is the reason that we discussed it because there's certain limitations on height nature of fences in front yards and around pools and water. I think if your question is about what to plan, there's no proposal for a variance, so anything would conform. But the applicant here, and, and I think you're welcome to ask the applicant what their intent is, and maybe they can give you some information to know what they're.
Okay. I mean, it's not important for the scope of tonight. I know it's getting late, but just wanted to mention a few things. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions, people? Okay, I have a record question. Mr. Bruno, do you have anything further on the president?
I think my client would like to, uh, address the board in closing, and then, uh, that would be it.
As I've mentioned in the first meeting, Nancy and I really want to come here and live here. Uh, we respectfully request this board to approve our project. If there are any issues with the sports court, Nancy and I are willing to not build the sports court and just keep the house as it is. We would love to have both. But if the board feels that because of the total square footage, because the sports court adds to that, we can live with no sports court. I'll have to go play pickleball somewhere else. Um, but we really want to live. Um, but we really wanna live in this town. Uh, it's been two years since we've purchased this property, costing us a lot of money, real estate taxes and maintenance. Um, we really wanna sell the house that we live in in Chester and move into Fairhaven. Like I mentioned, yeah, we wanna be here for the rest of our lives, I mean, we've been in Chester for over almost forty years, we don't jump around. Grandchildren live fifteen minutes away. Wanna spend with our family and we love, my uh, my niece teaches at the Fairhaven School, Grammar School on Hans. You know, so, um, we love the town. We wanna live here.
So removal of a sports court, uh, would make the. Habitual area seventy eight sixty nine, which is less than a thousand square feet, which would be permitted under the up zoning. Uh, I think that with the more than two times the size of the up zoning, the forty thousand square foot. Um, the the testimony you've heard as to the justification for the relief for that little less than a thousand square feet over. The uh, the the up zoning, uh, is even, you know, more greatly enhanced, obviously. And so, uh, if if that size continues to be an issue or the board's concerned. Uh, I think the re- removal of the sports court gets us to a point where we're hopeful. That gets the the necessary votes if we don't have enough for the, uh, total application.
So your own testimony, sports court. Was eleven thousand, one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet, less than seven eight three one.
I think that's right, I mean, we had the debate over the thirty some, thirty something feet. That 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 that's right, seven eight three ones. Yeah.
Plus minus thirty feet for the.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's a lot, um, that that's a really substantial change to what's being proposed, um. So I think that word and deliberate with the understanding that the applicant is willing to remove the sports court to the extent that that sways a vote. And the direction of approval, and I think that's what you're asking. For the application to move forward with the idea that it all is being requested, and that as we're deliberating, if we've got a hung vote. That we can pull the sports court in order to get that moving to the front.
Yes, we're hoping we were persuasive enough that we don't have to remove it, but, uh, we don't wanna walk out of here with denial. And, uh, that would be our last gasp effort to try to get you to see, uh, the the merit of this request, this application.
Okay, um, so yeah, so so there were a series of things over the the meetings that have been, um. Sort of offered up with regard to, um, acceptable conditions, um, on an approval, and so I think we should make sure that we can handle all of those things. Um, and and Mr. Bruno, I think you should confirm that the things that, I guess, that Doug. That Doug's got are all are all acceptable, all the way back to the last column. With regard to some landscaping, I guess, you can be part of the unity adjacent ones.
I have my list, so I think I'll follow along.
I think, let me go through what I have at this point in time, the judicial information, additional concerns, please address those. Trying to develop these over the last three years, in no particular work. Um, the applicant has agreed to additional landscaping and screening around the, uh, generator, the H V A C. They would, uh, make sure that the freehold soils application will be provided, they will be accounted at this point in time. Applicant has agreed, uh, to provide dry wells to capture runoff for all these areas. And submit those plans to the engineer for review and recommendation. Applicant will apply with priority to pay permits for removal of any trees. Located now where the generators and ACs are, applicant would be complying with all D E P regulations. Uh, outdoor lighting, we haven't spent a lot of time, but there was a representation by the applicant that it would be low. Landscape lighting examples would be submitted to the engineer for recommendation approval. Um. The sports court has now been shifted, uh, with regard to the sports court, there is not. Specific identification of the soundproofing, but the applicant has been confirmed assuming that. They will be doing things to provide for channel proofing and that they will be viewed by the engineer and follow recommendations of the engineer. There would be a consolidation of two lots and restriction on future subdivision, with your restriction. For the sports car to be used as a garage for residents, or I would say habitable area. That's what we've done, reduction of patio and small and pool area. Believe those are the conditions I have today, is there anything else anybody else had, recollection for a condition?
You have land, so did you say landscaping, I I I think you said mechanicals, but. The sports court to the extent that that stays and then continue down towards lot thirteen point oh six. Plus landscaping screening to the west lot eleven?
I I think what we'll do is we'll put the landscaping plan in for review and recommendation by the engineer.
Okay, that's that's what I would be reviewing for.
But but some of the contacts for the agreement to add additional landscaping, I think directly to the sports court. The extent that the sports court isn't part of something, then I don't think that those particular conditions.
Right, I I I'm gonna read it as though it's all only at this point in time, those would be the conditions. Now, assuming sports court is in, if not, obviously we wouldn't have conditions concerned.
Dry well.
Yes, we did, that we was, I think it's already been placed on the site plan. And as but as to the particulars, the engineer is still gonna have to make sure that capture sufficient runoff and those types of saves for those capitalizations.
What's that standard, what 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 did we talk about, what for the new construction, e- everything from the roof that needs to go underground?
Yeah.
Nothing for the patios, et cetera?
Correct, that's what they're showing currently.
So and so that's that's the municipal standard and and that's, um, that's already, we don't need this condition we can reference it, right, but that's what we're doing.
And I I have one more recommendation, and I I mentioned this at the first hearing, but. This project is right on the threshold of being a major development for stormwater management, which is one acre disturbance. Um, they're proposing point ninety, point nine eight acres. Um, and that's something that's really difficult for any borough office to track in the future. As far as what's been previously disturbed versus a brand new permit or something that's a very, you know, small amount of disturbance. So I have this in my letter on page five, it's at the bottom. But, uh, the recommended condition would be that the approved limit of disturbance is point nine eight acres. If any future disturbance occurs on this property that combines with any past project, it would exceed one total acre disturbance. Property will exceed the threshold of a major development will be required to provide the necessary stormwater amount.
What would that be?
So they'll need to meet the three prongs, which is water, uh, quantity reductions, so basically taking a two, ten, hundred year storm. And reducing that significantly by depending on your property and infiltrating it. Um, you need water quality, which is, um. Uh, basically taking all paved areas and treating it, whether it's through infiltration or filters or. The microtaped structure or or. Product, and then groundwater recharge, which is taking a set number of, you know, volume and putting it into the ground. It's a lot more, a lot more involved than just saying we have a dry well that captures all three filters.
So but it's easy to see where the line's been drawn right at the one acre and they've, they've really worked.
That's exactly the point, yeah.
Very clear, but part of the problem I have with with putting it into a resolution. Is that the suggestion that you would do all those things because you wanted to add a small patio. Uh, what that application might be to rethink the drainage on the entire property, could that be accommodated? Like treating a driveway that isn't pitched to design, take the water down and run it out to view that.
Um, I mean, I know you don't see this often because we're not talking about disturbing more than one acre, but you'll need, you know, above ground basins excavated, yeah. The ground, and it's not necessarily just roof, it's, you can put yard inlets and pitch it to a basin. It's a state requirement, so it's.
Yes. All right, well, let's let's take that under, but we'll talk. Um, you've also heard, I'm sorry, additional condition?
Maybe, and should I bring it up now or?
Well, I just got.
I I I would like to make sure everybody knows what they're voting on, this would be included in our resolution. We're stating the positive for approval, so if you have an additional condition that you think so, it was either agreed to or we should discuss, let's do that there.
Um, okay, so when I look at the property, the vote, and I have a chance of looking at the ground land. It appears to be, um, the net or fencing that goes underneath the dock. Past high water line. Is that permanent structure? For deer?
Yeah, no.
Um, so from the high water line to the low tide line, that is state land, there's public trust that can't be impeded. So that needs to be ruled, and if you're trying to keep deer out, God bless you.
Be full of plenty.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let me.
Just if you could elaborate on the soundproofing.
I they have not committed to anything, so I cannot. Oh, I'm your lawyer, he's the man that would recommend soundproofing, and that's why what we're gonna do is have them propose those types of things. And have our engineer move you and make recommendations whether or not that's a good use or not. Okay, so the offer is to implement reasonable soundproofing measures so as to attenuate noise from the pickleball activity.
And the mechanics.
Yeah, I mean, so what they would do is they would submit to Jordan that part resolution requires a particular plan. And Jordan needs to use discretion as to whether or not they've achieved the reasonable standard, um, and so it's loose. Um, because there has to be any testimony to help us understand what they might do, um, but that's that's about it. If if you have anything to add as to, for example. Uh, a noise standard of property line, which we have ordinance is about, or anything maybe that you might try to establish as to what reasonable might be under this right plan.
So I don't know how how much, uh, to go into this, depending on how the vote goes, I guess, but. Did some late night deep diving, I pulled all the decibels and, um. And it's, there is precedent across the country of towns limiting, limiting it. Um, like noise ordinance, so it would be, you know, not after certain hours. Um, and then in some towns, they even limit how many hours in the week you can do it. Um, I think that's more for the public courts, but considering that it's in a neighborhood, um. I potentially limiting, you know, making sure it's not like late night. Um, um, pass noise ordinance hours. It would be bugged it in with noise.
Well, I mean, you would have your regular noise, or it's still a municipality, pickleball notwithstanding.
No, yeah, what I mean is, um, you know, I don't, I think it could be louder, now we. We don't really have any precedent through the town for it, and certainly not allow it, it could be, um.
May I ask you to share your deep dive with George, so he doesn't have to do that, you knew that will guide him. In regard to those, rather than rather than commit to something right now, but they, I, again, I don't speak for the applicant. I think they would be reluctant to commit to anything they hadn't done the same research.
Yeah.
But I'm I'm not, I'm not saying that isn't something that George, I think you should certainly take into consideration.
So, Mr. Bruno, when we deliberate, we're gonna stop communicating with you with regard to what it is that we're doing, but we reach a fully clear, we're talking about those sorts of issues. You know, just kind of get my attention, you know, and bring you back to this guy. I wanna sort of ask a question with regard to the garage. Because it's occurred to me throughout that the pickleball court is a garage. Um, it also occurs to me that the garage could be used for pickleball. Um, I understand you can't do them both at the same time, but I don't see any reason, maybe short other uses for the garage. But is there a reason that you wouldn't want the flexibility, and I don't know, we would even, other than the fact we talked about it so much. Um, wouldn't want or to acknowledge the opportunity to stripe it. And create some sort of opportunity to on occasion put the net up and use it for pickleball. In which case, maybe we could build in some of the things we talked about and make sure that you were comfortable and you could do that. I wasn't expecting any last minute suggestion or removal of the pickleball court altogether, so I'm just spitballing, um.
Well, I think. We were hoping that having the the pickable unclosed is a big step towards the noise issue, and then we, on top of that, we understand there still could be some noise. That we were gonna use whatever efforts are available to diminish that noise even further, and then whatever buffering was available. Subject to Mr. Rizzo review again, to make sure it was a sound plan, so we were happy to do that. If all of a sudden, you're worried about us putting it in the garage. Uh, and you wanna add a condition as to, uh, that kind of thing, it we'd be fine, we don't have any plans to put it in the garage, we. We're, you know, we're just trying to get through this evening.
Yeah, I just wanna make it clear, cause I've been, I think I've been pretty clear on the garages throughout, I I I don't have a problem with the oversized garage. I didn't have a problem using the pickleball court as a garage, and I didn't know why you'd wanna offer up the invitation, I understand you want the approval. I'm trying to find out whether or not you would want us to specifically mention in any resolution approval, it's been contemplated. In in that it would be okay to the extent that the attenuation issues were addressed the way that we discussed.
That that would be, that would be great if you if you decide to remove the pickleball court. If you put that in there, we we wouldn't have a problem with that.
We wouldn't sign to remove it, that would be.
No, when we talk about it, the issue is that this being presented as a full plan. And when we get to a straw poll, we will figure out whether or not there's enough, um, support for this as it sits. And then if necessary, we will then do another straw poll without the pickleball court and see whether or not that gets it there. And the applicants indicated that they would go either way if they wanted to.
Let me address one other matter, I think we have outstanding as to whether or not. Jordan has been that the garage technically needs a variant because it can accommodate four vehicles. I guess that you address that under the standard that I'm going to give to you, but also I guess that you address in your comments. Sports court, yea or nay, in the condition so far, um, you're dealing with not a hardship variant. Not a senior variant, just a senior two variants, and I'm principally focusing on the the cap. Under the applicable standards, variants can be granted if the benefits of deviating from the zone ordinance. Since not following the cap substantially outweigh any detriments. The applicant must show that the proposed design is an improvement that would better serve the public interest. Okay, I also agree with the chair's comments earlier, try to give you. Because it, because the flexible C is so custom made to the application. It's what they're proposing, I also agree with the chair's comments that. If mayor and council would have the opportunity to take a moment, those nightmares, and that's. This would be a better design creative than you'll be having placed at this point in time. Any questions about that theory? In a sense, it doesn't just benefit the property only, but it has a benefit to the community in large. Planner left that comment, Mr. Chavetti's comment of saying, you know, what benefit does this have? To our zoning ordinance by not complying with that. I've heard the planner's response to that, I'm giving you the reason for the, why that question was made based upon the statute, okay?
I just have one clarification on the dry well and the discussion from before, the plan also shows that they're picking up some of the patio drainage. And getting into the dry well as well, so I just.
Good for them, good for them, I think, uh, I.
So then the engineer's review would be the implementation of the drainage plan that started and then incorporated, which would include the access of the.
Uh, where do you see that?
Lot plan, uh, page three of seven, next to the pool, there's, uh, patio drain. The way I see it, Jordan, it's running into the dry well, it's in the heaps.
Yeah, I think you're probably right, I thought that was just a roof leader. Um, but it does have a grate on it, I don't think that's gonna pick up very much at all, um, but that's, that's fine.
Yeah, it just was a point that it's not just the roof area, to the extent that that's. Yeah, it just was a point that it's kind of just the roof area to the extent that that's factors into your review.
Yeah, I got it.
So could I, could I start off your discussion by telling you that I think that they're able of the pickleball court is compelling? I think that there is precedent for this board considering the size, notwithstanding exceedance of the cap. I think examples of that where we're scraping a lot and starting over are a little bit harder to find, but they exist. The consolidation, there is no consolidation, so just the deed restriction on further subdivision, I think is a material give. Not that it's in any way clear how you would subdivide it. But I think that we learned on the last fee that relying on an oversized lot to support a house. And not restricting it can lead you to a five month subdivision. And not that I think that this applicant has any plans with regard to that. So from my perspective, I see the deviation from the sixty nine hundred square foot standard on upzoning. By nine hundred square feet in light of the totality as an ass that is not outside of reasonable, all things considered. I've spoken a lot, and I didn't need to necessarily jump anybody else that wanted to say a lot. But I did want to sort of just make that point to you that, to me, that that is compelling. Now I'm done.
I'll piggyback on you because I have the same note, the lack of subdivision, even though there's no foreseeable way that that could happen. You never know in the future, and I do, I do think that that's one of those chips that that has pulled us back. And I, and I also agree with another improvement, which would be the beautification of the lot. I think there, I think it's a beautiful design, I think the landscaping is huge. I think moving away from the, the side yard to the east is. I mean, I know it's already been wet plain, but I do think that all of those things are, are.
Go along with that, the demonstration is definitely a benefit. You know, I really appreciate the efforts that you made to accommodate us. I think some of the changes that you made address my concerns. Or the impact from the river. You know, if you take away the pickleball court, you know, you're looking at something that's not a huge ass. I really. Don't want you to take away the pickleball court. You know, I think it kind of blends into the property. It's really not visible from the river, and you have to, a lot of your testimony, you do have a large lot that I think can accommodate that. You know, the other benefits, as Daniel said, I think your landscaping plan is. You know, it's going, it's going to be beautiful, it's going to be a showcase. And the overall design and, you know. The way it stands now, I can support it in totality. And I also think another benefit, I think you guys are going to be ready to dish it to the pair.
From the beginning, I was just trying my best to wrap my head around the size you were asking for. I think you created a little bit of an uphill battle for yourself, because I think what you present today is finally reasonable. And the arguments that I kind of came up myself with myself just to reason through. What kind of size might be natural on here is similar to the arguments that. At least Ms. Allen came up with, I had dug on my own, I have a list of even more properties here, and their sizing, so. That, I'm glad it worked out to hear some of that. And I think that the centering of the lot is a huge deal as well as. The thought that went into the architecture of this. I think it is in keeping with the waterfront view. And for that reason, I think it does help beautify our waterfront. And I'm torn about the pickleball court. Because indoors can make it louder. But soundproofing and potentially once all closed, enclosed would help. I suppose rather than that than an outdoor court. So I'm torn on what's the best scenario for that. But I think that being able to separate out the size of the principal house. Which I forget where you landed at, it was under eight thousand, is very helpful that we were, got to that number. So the extra eleven hundred square foot of the pickleball. I don't think it checks the picture as much as it did in your original rent.
So you've got an indication with regard to your straw poll as to the feelings on the pickleball court. So while we'll move in this direction, and to be unsure to touch on, on where you want to dive into that, if, if you're leaning any further.
Yeah, so, you know, I think it's obviously conflicting, right? I think the hard, you know, verse right are, are telling everyone one thing, and I kind of agree with Jackie, I think made it really difficult. You know, just asking for a lot and then reducing it heavily, I don't think. You know, it's never a negotiation point, particularly for me, right? And I do this regularly is that that holds any weight with me personally, because I just think it's easy to ask for a lot and then reduce it and say, hey, we reduced a lot, right? I don't, so that, take that for what it is, I think arguments by the planner were good. You know, it's still a little bit of a struggle, I think it could be easy to say, hey, if we had our forty, why are we still exceeding by X number of square feet, right? I do understand the lot's large, I think the subdivision argument is thin, I don't think it's possible, it's, it's a nice proper, and I think it's one we're going to accept. Or at least I would, you know, kind of require the pickleball court. I want you guys to enjoy your property, I don't, that's not an issue for me, it never was. I think it's overall about the size of the structure. That said, like, you know, it's not, there's the hard stuff, right? Just kind of the science of it, and then there's the argument, right? And I think the applicant, I think you guys both are, you know, genuine and earnest and. You know, I think you want to live here, it's, it's, it's a beautiful house, it always was, even when it was larger, notwithstanding the mass. So that's kind of mine. I, I think, I think it's very earnest application, I think you've done a good job trying to prove it out. I think some of the arguments were a little fuzzy and thin, but nevertheless, it's, you know, directionally, you've tried to prove as much as you can with, with what you have. And, and I appreciate all of the work you put in.
Much to add, you know, it's already been said, but I do appreciate the efforts of the applicants have made to get to where we're at today. It's certainly a lot different than the application that came in July and back in those years. You know, we've had a couple of applications that come for us where there was proposal to knock houses down and, yeah, applying slate. And my initial reaction is, well, why can't you comply? Sharon, you brought up on a couple of these, well, you have to look at what you're getting back in return. And I think some of the things I'm getting back in return on this one is the centering of the house on the lot, which I think is important. And I, I think, you know, Paul, you brought up the river, the lot in turn this application, I think getting all this runoff into a dry well is also not good. And another thing that this sort of stuck to me is that, all right, you know, if, if we don't just have them using the existing structure. And so not coming in renovated and add on to it, I think by and large, you would have said, okay, I think we could work with that, but. It would be right up against the lot to the, to the east anyway, you know, I, I just not in the best spot in this lot. So I think moving to the center means something to me. And I don't necessarily think that, I think the lot can sustain a house of this size. I mean, you had a house of similar size that was there for how many years? I think this is a lot, if there's anywhere in town, people going above the cap, and we, you know, I'm not taking the cap away for a lot of the reasons that I stated. You know, and, and I'm not. We lost its own direction in state's case, but there's a reason why the cap is still in place all these years later. And why the governing bodies has chosen to, to keep it there. That being said, we did this within our jurisdiction tonight to make an exception. And I think based on everything that's, that's happened, regression is application, I can support it. The pickleball court, I'm a little bit torn on, Paul, you said you don't think you're going to be able to see it from the river. I'm not sure about that, and granted, you're looking at the side of it, but don't you think you're going to be able to see?
Would, but it's not going to be, I'm looking at it, you know, it's not going to be a straight line, then all of a sudden, boom, it's going to be offset.
And back a little bit.
And back and.
I also think you probably don't even know what it is, right? You know, I think it's a freestanding garage, yeah.
And I think the worst thing that could happen, I'm not saying the applicants do this, but they could probably put a court somewhere else in the property outdoors. And that's going to be much worse for the neighborhood than.
Not if they disturb more than one acre though.
That's a good point, too.
Well, they can disturb, it's just going to be a lot more work.
They can, they can do what my neighbors do, play pickleball on their driveway, then it's not only a budget.
You know, and starting touching on that, if they go above the acre, it's a compulsion to folks that if you take the, the sports court out of this, then you're backing off of that threshold somewhat by whatever that. Amount is so that they're not quite up against it, so that maybe it's something that don't says, but it's the next applicant or that comes in with this property way down the road. But they're not up against that one acre, does that matter to people?
Doesn't matter to me, it's, I think, just comes with the territory, you know, then, then you just understand it's part of the, the work you're going to do, right? You have to find a place for a.
I mean, I, I just.
Sort of in any development, right?
I think, I think on some level, just having this closer to that sixty nine hundred in, in total, probably means something to me. But. I think I said enough.
The only argument or proof that I heard, excuse me. That intended to be a benefit to someone other than the property. Was we're not going to subdivide it and put into sixty nine hundred square foot homes. You couldn't, yeah, I mean, the, the, the idea that you could. Subdivide this property is just so close to impossible.
So you couldn't as a matter of right, you'd need a variance of some sort.
Right. But why not say, okay, we can subdivide it into twenty R fives and put forty seven, forty four thousand square feet of houses? It's, it's just as.
No, I, I hate to tell you, but if you could put a public road, if they had the right to take these hands back here, they could make that argument, somebody could make that.
That's what I was concerned about, it is a private road that no one really knows, I mean.
Well, the question was whether they had the property rights, if they were, if they were capable, think about the last. If they were capable of building an RSIS compliant public road through the property and then further subdivided, the argument would be that the lots that they're creating are consistent with lots of. The argument would be to start thirty, there's no more files. But we've seen some pretty weird things, and so, you know. Not as a matter of rights, subject to whatever it takes to get through a board, but it's possible.
So something that's possible but not probable was the only positive that I've heard.
I mean, would it be possible?
As far as, as far as the C two, the variance is.
Let me add to that, I, I think that some of the positives that we're talking about, the landscaping, improving the drainage, beautifying it, all those things, that's going to, that's coming.
All those things come with anything we put on this lot and have it, it's been scraped clean.
And, and, and I, I believe the applicant when they say they want to move here, and I know it doesn't sound sincere. But I, I want the applicant to move to Farquhar, so whether, but whether they did or didn't, somebody's going to put a house here.
If you want to move to Farquhar because you like the character of Farquhar. Build the house that fits the character of Farquhar, the character of Farquhar being it's got a cap.
So, so that's where we get right to the heart of the C two. And so I think that it's, it's clear how you feel with regard to the cap, and I think that that's.
I'm not, and a couple of people have told me tonight how I feel about this. I don't particularly appreciate that, but. Yeah, I, I, I think that the cap is important. Do I get emotional about the cap? No. Have I ever voted to exceed the cap? Yes, rarely. I get emotional about an initial ask of one hundred and ten percent above the cap. I get emotional about an eighty percent ask above the cap. When you consider dropping the pickleball court. You're still looking at a fifty percent. Ask above the cap. Above the cap as it exists, not above the upzone cap, it's still fifteen percent above if you upzone.
I'm sorry, I was doing that again, fifty percent over the fifty.
Yeah, it's still fifty percent. It's, it's fifty percent of the initial ask, but it's fifty percent above the cap. Okay?
Yep.
And. I'm not saying it's not a beautiful house. You know, I'm saying. Even if you drop the pickleball court, it's fifty percent above the cap.
So I totally agree, and the truth of the matter is that I really worry about the zone plan. And so some of the things that I can't forget are when people walk in and they say, this one's thirty seven, this one's thirty eight. And you approved them before, and therefore we should be able to get here.
That was the other part of the, the argument that I had broadly. If you want to say, well, we've got aerials, and this looks consistent with the aerials. But you've had several months since the first meeting, even not, not just since you started planning this. But since the first meeting, you've got several months. To go do the research beyond just what the first floor in or some of these houses. But to do the research and find out, some of these have been constructed recently, could you get the plans? And find out what the as-built square footage is? Absolutely. But the only reason not to do that is because you don't want to show those numbers.
I generally.
In my mind, in my opinion.
I generally agree with that, certainly one hand is available, one you can do is an over search. I don't know what they would give you in terms of copies, but I know you could go look at them, and you could certainly figure out what the numbers are.
Construction plans.
Yeah, I'm sure. And at times, do need to infer that information isn't made available, that it is being selectively presented. And when we spoke to the planner, we talked that through, we talked through the tax record, and I think you did a decent job of providing context to the arguments that she wanted to make.
And I understand that argument, but I feel like there's flaws, I explained before. Whether you're looking at an aerial of similar properties, or whether you're looking at the first floor. Square footage of similar properties, and that is. Nobody, that, that has nothing to do with the airlight open space around the structure. You're looking down from the top. It is what it is, it's two dimensional. If you're looking at it from where we see these things. That same first floor area. Like I said, it could be sixty five feet wide. And, and that's what of the airlight open spaces is obstructing. Or it could be one hundred twenty, one hundred thirty feet wide. And that's what of the airlight open spaces is obstructing. So I, I don't think that that. Argument carries a whole lot of water for me, and I, I feel like it's, it's flawed, that's, that's my opinion again, I'll just share, that would be that.
I, I think you're right in pointing out the other ways of looking at it, I think you're right in sort of accepting that with a grain of salt as to what the argument was and the different ways to look at it. I mean, that, that both perspectives are valid in a valid way, I think. With regard to, with regard, look, what I would have done is I would have upzoned this to sixty nine, I would have stayed on the number. And then I would have come in and I would have asked for an oversized garage and a pickleball court, I would have been there. And frankly, I would have approved it, I think it would have gone through in a single meeting. I think the problem is that it started with a different philosophy as to what's appropriate. But I, and as much as I think that the pickleball court is better than the nine hundred square feet in the house. At this point in where we are, and with the applicant recognizing all of our concerns, they've moved it the way they've moved it. I don't feel strongly enough to vote against it without the pickleball court. I will not vote in favor of it with the pickleball court, because more of what you said, it's just that it matters. And the cap does matter, the zone plan matters, but I am able to see the larger lot, I am able to see the benefits that are unique to this particular application. There are certainly worse things that can go here, even if they're new. And to me, on balance, that flexibility is a reasonable amount of flexibility to give to this particular project. So I. With me stating that clearly, I want to go around and, and I know that we've got, you're good with pickleball court?
Yeah.
Or you're good with pickleball court?
Yes.
Good with pickleball court, you're close.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine either way.
Whatever, pickleball court, prefer now, it's, it's, it's four, three, I've got four, so. do you guys wanna have any discussion, those of you that are about to make a motion to approve it with the pickleball court? Do you have any um discussion with regard to conditions on approval outside of what um Mr. Kovats has already listed? Um, are there any other things you wanna discuss before you make your motion?
I I'd like to say one more thing, it's sure to comment, more than a discussion, sure, and that is that I wonder how long it's gonna be, even though there is no precedent set by this decision before we're gonna see this as a comp in front of this board.
It's a fair, listen, it's a fair comment, that's my worry with the fact that I'm scripted to begin with, right, is that we've almost, and and I haven't been here as long as some of the people, but I've never seen a situation to date where it's scraped a lot, right? So imagine if this lot just sold for what your applicant bought it for, right, just land value. We would, this this would never, this would never go down, this never, right? It would be build it, conform it. We don't wanna see you, don't come here, come here. There are people who've come here, it's it's lasted twenty minutes, they realize it's a nonstarter, they walk out. And those are for smaller lots, yes, right, or a deviation is a much larger mass, and and I and I recognize the mass here, but I do share Al's concern in that, and that's the concernation I've had this whole time, it's not the houses are beautiful, it's not the lots aren't beautiful, the size and all this stuff, it's that this is something that would never, we're making a very specific you know, exclusion for you, and you could almost, you could almost use it the other way, you could almost say, well, if you didn't have the dollars to do this, you couldn't come here and make that argument, and we wouldn't make that argument on an R five for a house that's still a million and a half, two million dollar house in town, right? So you could almost make it both ways, and that's the concernation I've had this whole time, is if it's scraped, it should conform because that's the, it's not that it shouldn't for this particular one, it's just that's the looking glass we take in on every application that comes in here, and why should we act different on this one? And that's, and that's my concernation with the whole thing, it's not that none of the stuff's, it's not the artists that were made weren't great, the neighboring houses aren't huge. I get it, I'm I'm a real, listen, I'm a real stick, I've built it to fifteen thousand feet, right, but we have to look at the ordinances as they sit, because that's our job, that's what we're here to do, and we're here to do that to avoid it being a, you know, a total circus where it gets so far out of control, we don't know who we are anymore, and that is kind of uh why I felt on that to begin with. I've voiced my opinions, I think it can make great arguments, I think the applicant is so sincere and genuine, and I think on earnest, they wanna live here, um and I'm supportive of of where we're going to, but I I just wanted to make that note, so I don't wanna leave Al hanging out there.
No, completely, I mean, I brought that up and everyone yelled at me for saying the precedent, and 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 I I hear you, there is no. However.
Sure.
Um, however, it's, like I said, it's the numbers that are the concern, so for me, the pickleball court being separate makes me feel better about it. Uh, and the fact that the the number is now down under eight thousand for the house makes me feel better about it. Um, and I also think that this is a very unique property. There, I mean, yes, there are other waterfront properties in town, but the majority aren't waterfront, and this is a, this is a unique waterfront, so that's how helped me make my decisions.
We don't have a waterfront zone to give us guidance, seemingly left, we're trying to make our own decisions about what's reasonable, given location, it's almost beautiful lots in town.
Well, I think that's what we're doing here, and that's, I think that's kind of the underlying concern, because that this then becomes that decision.
That's the distinction.
That, right, and then this then becomes that new.
And the other thing, not to view the precedent, but you know, we look at every case as an individual, and I always have a problem playing basing my decision on what might come down the road. Uh, we don't know what's coming down the road, this is what's in front of us tonight. If something comes down the road and someone's throwing a giant property or giant house in wherever they may, who will deal with that? This.
We also didn't take it lightly. How many meetings have we, how many hours?
Probably an hour.
Yeah.
Push an hour and a half. Um, at least hour nine. Um, you know, we have discussed this for a very long time, and I think that this design and this plan for this piece of property, when they came in, no way. The changes that they've made, uh accommodations that they've made, um and I agree with this, this is the annual, the way the pickleball court that's separate from the main building, I think, uh and Marty, to your concern, you know, if it was further up or attached to the house and you saw it from the river, it would be like, oh geez, but since it's back and it's probably gonna be, I'm imagining some kind of landscape in between the river and there, and it is considerably, you know, it's far back off the river. Um, so I don't think that that is a huge issue, and it might be thousands of facts, whoa, but let's not get into that. That's not a problem.
We're about to square footage now.
The square footage, if you, but that's, if it was.
It's not gonna say, it's gonna have this eighty-nine, forty-one, regardless of the numbers.
I'm kind of looking at them as two sep- two separate pieces, and I know we might disagree on that, but the house is not far off from some of the neighboring property.
Even if it's two, two separate pieces, and even if the decision is made in order to get an approval here to do away with that building, recognize that you're still fifty percent.
It is, but that's. But it is, and you know, some of, some of it was portrayed in a way that I didn't really appreciate, but it is a very unique one. And it is a probably one of the premium lots in town. And to put some constrictions on it, you know, I I think it it can accommodate a lot of things, and yes, we do have rules that come to us, but we also have the ability to make exceptions.
Yeah.
And a lot of that is with trade-offs, and I think we've had a lot, we have a lot of trade-offs here, and there's a lot of benefits. Uh, number one, you know, they're not gonna subdivide the lot. Is it, is it, is it very likely?
Be honest with you, something about subdividing this lot, who gets the waterfront lot and who gets the land block?
Out, the way thing, the way, the way real estate is going in this state, very unlikely that it's gonna be subdivided, but it could be.
Okay, it could be subdivided into into twenty R fives, and it'd be a fifteen million dollar project.
Right.
Then you want that on the river?
No, I'm saying if that's ridiculous, then I'm saying.
Out, there there are ridiculous things happening every day. And we we don't, we don't know.
For that to be a benefit.
Well, I'm, I'm contradicting myself, we, I don't want you to say what if, but what if things change? Is it better to have one house that's oversized than something else? Very unlikely, and I'm just saying.
You just said it's a unique lot, and it's a premium lot. It's none of that if you subdivide.
But we, but you know, but we don't, but we don't know what is gonna happen, and so why, this is, if, I'm sorry, if it's approved, it's never gonna be subdivided.
Alright, so let's stipulate either one of you gonna change each other's minds, so that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's fine, you're gonna be yin and yang. I think you got a no vote. I think that the question on the table is whether or not there's any further discussion with regard to conditions that's necessary, and if there is, then let's have those discussions, and if there are not, I think we're ready for a motion for somebody that was comfortable with regards to the approval of including the pickleball.
I have one more point.
Okay.
Um, adding to the lot, the and cap. I think part of the point of the cap is so that you don't direct monsters, not express um houses on a lot. One thing we don't quite have to worry about with waterfront for this particular land is that it's not on a main road. So you don't you don't have to worry about how it's looking to the road as they're passing by, walking to school, someone driving past, and um how monstrous it would look to the public, the kind of just is the waterfront uh that you take into consider- consideration when you're considering how you need a cap to keep um houses from being seen and that's, and since we just have the waterfront, the town's gonna be larger homes on all of them. And that's where I'm raising my mind.
And if if that's consideration, the body should rezone the waterfront. They have.
No, no, the truth is that the C two variance provides an outlet to a property owner that doesn't see the zoning, that lines up with what they think is a better opportunities to develop a piece of property, I think that's exactly where we are, and I think that's that's fair. I I I believe the policy of the council not changing, it says something, but it doesn't eliminate our ability to consider uh this project as.
Uh, well, so, so, why don't we get back to the court, right? So I'm, I'm not, you know, it's an acoustical engineer, right? Um, and nor do I know what would satisfy neighbors, right? The few neighbors that have come up and they had concerns about sound or whatever, so I I think someone will have to work with the appropriate engineer to solve whatever that problem is, so that it's as, it's it's as mitigated as possible from the neighboring homes, right, that'll hear it. Uh, I I don't feel strongly about the pickleball court one way or the other, I'm I'm fine with it, I want them to enjoy their house. Pickleball court's never the issue for me, so I'm not quite sure the appropriate way to take motions to deal with that, we don't know the exact stipulation of what should be included.
You've heard, you've heard the conditions.
Yeah.
That's what's gonna be included, the soundproof will be used by the engineer, and they will buy it directly from the patient. There is.
Before we get any further, um if this is to be approved, there's also the thirty-something square feet that we discussed. Um, would you be comfortable um me verifying that between now and the resolution to memorialize and inserting that new number?
Yes, which would push us over nine thousand square feet.
Was it gonna be the new number, or was it gonna be the open covered deck?
So let's, so let's not get caught up in something silly. It's not a lot of square feet, it's not traditional living space. The alternative to them adding the thirty-eight square feet to the number is to open it up and keep it as all of them forged, it's just getting caught up in it and all, make the call, but let's not get it.
Yeah, totally agree, so I'm gonna make sure that you know that it'll be added.
I I assume that the people that want to vote in affirmative believe that the thirty-eight square feet is the minimum, so are you not surprised?
No.
No.
Uh. I will make a motion.
I have one question. For in, in your, at C N D, is there somebody that's equipped to look at?
No.
Who's taking litigation, or you're just gonna, you know?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to take what's presented and and go from there.
Okay.
And can I suggest that the way this get hand gets handled is that the applicant consults with somebody with regard to this and submits to you a written report that explains what they're gonna do with a conclusion, somebody that's qualified, who I don't, as far as we understand it, not your entity, so that you can rely on an expert or quasi-expert um that they present to you a plan.
Like an opinion there, essentially. Essentially what it is.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. That's true, that applies.
Acoustical.
Yeah. I I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna set, I don't, I'm not gonna set the standard, but the point is that I think they need to provide you with a fully baked design, you can look at it for reasonableness, and if you have questions, you can back to us and we'll deal with it, but I think we should put it to the applicant to propose their sound attenuation measures, and you're looking at it from a reasonable standard, letting us know if you're playing.
Totally agree.
Motion, motion to be, motion to be framed with the applicant seeking some areas favorable to constructing new single-family dwelling, with attached garage, porches, rear patio, modified driveway, dwelling, accessory sports court building, in-ground pool, and fire pit. Um, you've heard the conditions. A yes vote, and say vote positively for that application, and have a motion for that.
I make the motion to approve that statement.
Second, you're a club.
So. I'll say a lot easier.
Um, this is Angela.
Yes.
Mr. Marian.
Oh, thank.
Mr. Porte.
Yes.
Mrs. Newman.
Yes.
Mr. Muffet.
Yes.
Mr. Shavani.
No.
Mr. Leder.
No. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're four plus, four plus, guys.
Thank you.
Well, good luck.
Good luck.
Neighbors down. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Well, we definitely need a comfort break, but it's 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 ten thirty-five. Mr. Atkins, can you come forward?
So it's obvious, given the hour, um, it's our limited terms of anything that we could do, if it was started. My question to review is whether or not you let some, you screen a some that that you wanna try and use ten or fifteen minutes more, so would you provide some?
I'd like to start, I only have one witness. Um.
Oh, yeah.
Our our cap is measured by dozens of feet, not thousands of feet, so.
So, Mr. Atkins, I I I would I'd be remiss if I didn't provide any courtesy of doing something, but there's, there's no question that we're gonna shut this down, throw this beyond fifteen or twenty minutes. So.
That's fine.
I, please be mindful.
Oh, I'm very mindful, but if the board's willing to hear me, I'm happy to make the presentation, and I'm grateful for the opportunity.
Alright, so.
I know, I'm sure you're all very tired, too.
Three-minute comfort break, please.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Ryan.
Uh, here.
Mrs. Newman.
Yeah.
Mr. Muffet.
Yeah.
Good night.
Here.
I'm working with Ryan, I've got this, um and if that's created, you know, you might be application, or we're not, I might be application, maybe you can try to bring it up.
Uh, thanks, Chairman.
I'm sure your witnesses.
Please do, at this, we're just William Miller.
No applicants?
Applicants, no, I don't think we'll have the time, and I don't intend to call them.
Can you make any?
We have jurisdiction?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm aware to testify, testimony about to give before the board, the jury will treat you about military.
I do.
I'm gonna ask you, state your name, spell your last name, purchase of the record.
William R. Miller the third, M I L L E R.
I will tell you that uh while we're offering that, because I agreed to exhibits, I will provide those with the secretary later, basically, then run from eight one to eight five, and then two uh plenty of reports from C N D, leaving one to C D two, I'm sure the secretary has that.
And I stipulate my concurrence, thank you, Kovats. Chairman, board members, good evening.
So, so I mentioned, I just run through the checklist items, give it quick. Um, in general, or overall, I don't take any exception to these, um, which is why they're here tonight, so it's completed, uh completed checklist, which I completed myself, not an issue. Notice to property owners and notice to be published in the newspaper, um, that's been done at this point. Um, and then the outside agency approvals, which are Monmouth County Flying Board, Real S C D, um County Health Department, um all appear not to be applicable to this application, and then uh just a list of variances requested, um, which I have basically summarized my own list, um, so I don't take exception to that either.
Any questions with regard to the um
Very good. The chairman, board members, Mark Atkins on behalf of the Murphy family. Uh, the Murphy family, consisting of five, purchased this property at one twenty-three Maple uh in twenty twenty-three, so they've owned it for about two years. The original house was built in nineteen eighty, uh it currently contains an in-ground pool and a rear shed. It's located in the R five zone, it's a slightly larger lot at seventy, roughly seventy-six hundred square feet than what's required in the R five at five thousand. That's because of the lots depth, the lots depth. It's, it's a hundred and fifty-three feet deep, uh whereas it's fifty feet wide, so that's where the excess square footage comes from. And not surprisingly, the proposal for you this evening is to add a small two-story addition to the right rear corner of that existing nineteen eighties residence. Um, Mr. Murphy works from home, and so the proposal on the first floor is to add a relatively small office for him, and then a relatively small fourth bedroom above, when I say relatively small in terms of the size of the bedroom, approximately twelve feet by sixteen feet. The applicants meet the lot coverage, building coverage and F A R on this property by a significant measure. The applicants are seeking a maximum floor area variance, C variance, by exceeding the twenty-two hundred square foot cap by a hundred and thirty-three square feet. Some simple math, and you heard my, perhaps my introductory comments, that here we're talking about scores of feet, not hundreds and thousands of feet. But if you take that hundred and thirty-three feet over the two floors and you divide it by the two floors, it's about sixty-six and a half feet per floor, just to kind of put the application perspective for the board's benefit. With me this evening is William Miller, the project's applicant, he's been sworn my place's credentials on the record, Mr. Chan. Um, good evening, Mr. Miller, do you possess any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect since uh nineteen eighty-three, eighty-eight.
Nineteen eighty-eight, terrific, and have you given testimony and been recognized as an expert with regard to architectural issues?
Yes.
In the state of New Jersey before planning and zoning boards?
Yeah, in most towns in Monmouth County, Ocean County, uh, some in Somerset. Uh, Morris and Mercer.
Chairman.
Mr. Robert, you're, I've been recognized by any awards and fairytale.
Yes.
Yes, you have?
Yes.
Okay, and you're familiar with the frame, and all the tips, and how to calculate square footage, and blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
Yes? Better than blah, blah, blah?
I'm sorry.
Better than blah, blah, blah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any questions with regard to Mr. Miller's credentials?
Okay, uh, thank you, Chairman, for qualifying, Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller, can you orient the board to? The Murphy residence, um, exists existing conditions, and in more detail, what we're proposing with this evening's application?
Okay, so, um, initially when I spoke with Mr. and Mrs. Murphy, they ex. Ex- uh, explained that they were having a child, a new baby, um, and they were looking for. A, an additional bedroom, um, in addition, Mr. Murphy works from home. Uh, so they were looking for workspace for him. Which would be outside of the realm of, uh, family room, uh, living room kind of space. So, um. In analyzing the property, um, it was felt that. An existing corner of the, of off the rear, right rear of the house. Uh, where there's a void, uh, adjacent to the deck and behind the, uh, existing dining room. Uh, we could square that off. And and put the addition there. Um, the idea, part of the idea was to also be able to take advantage of the deck. From the office that we could, um, access the deck from the office. And, uh, on the second floor. To, uh, extend a hallway from the existing upper hallway. Uh, to the new bedroom in the rear, um, and take advantage of the. Uh, of the common wall between the new hall and the existing bath. Uh, otherwise, uh, if you can, if you're looking at the second floor, there's dash lines showing. Where demolition of closets would be, if we, if we had lined up the walls, those closets would become. Uh, isolated and unusable.
And you're continuing the plane on, uh, that side of the house?
Yes, we're.
Currently meets the side yard setback.
Yes, we're extending the, the right side. Uh, in plane, and, uh, again, uh, at the first floor, we're extending the deck in plane.
Okay.
So we're just squaring off that, or that area.
Right, and then on on the left side, right, we currently have a non-conforming condition at fifteen point seven feet, correct?
Yeah, the, um.
Where sixteen feet is required in terms of the combined side yards.
Yes, the initial survey that I was given from when the Murphys purchased the house. Did not give a dimension of the corner of the deck, it only gave a dimension in the front of the house. So, uh, interpolating the. Dimensions on the left side, uh, I'm sorry, on the right side to the property line, and the one dimension we had on the left side. Um, I, uh, made a judgment, plus or minus, to get to that fifteen point seven square, or linear feet.
Linear feet, okay, and the left side is the north side, and the right side is the south side, just so.
Exactly.
We can orient the board.
Exactly. Sorry, I must straighten it all, but the, the number that we are taking through Mr. Miller's extrapolation is what?
Is fifteen point seven, where sixteen feet is combined, the sixteen feet is required combined.
Yeah, so fifteen point seven is existing, and when you look at the first.
Fifteen point seven is existing, you look at the first sheet on, uh, the existing site plan?
Yeah. Back left by the deck, it says six point three feet.
Excuse it a little bit, Mr. Porte.
That's point two.
It runs in a little bit, it's not perfectly parallel.
That's six point three.
I'm sorry.
And then, and then on the right side of the house, the right side of the house, the front is nine point four. That is fifteen point eight feet existing, however, the addition in the back right is nine point five. So that's fifteen point eight proposed.
Both, both sides skew a tenth of a foot or so.
Again, that's in order to keep between.
Yeah, no, understood, if, no, it's not explained, it's an odd. Uh, you'll see it's an average.
Fifteen point eight, I'm sorry, fifteen point seven exists, and then proposed. Proposed is also fifteen point seven, the variance is for fifteen point eight.
Because of the skew. So it's drifting in an inch over that distance back.
Correct.
Mr. Atkins, you're comfortable in using numbers based on this extrapolation, because any people from this board would have a number in. And it's also into verification, and at some point, if we find out that extrapolation is wrong.
Yeah, that's it, sir. So, yes, the answer is yes, based upon the prior survey and the extrapolation that's done by Mr. Miller, yes, because. The existing foundation is, the existing structure is there, and if we continue in plane. We don't have an issue on the north side, and as long, and we have plenty of room on the, on the south side, so I don't see it as an issue, there's no side yard variance that's created. It's just the combination of the two, if you will, be the distance what it may.
Yeah, look, I mean, the lack of accuracy, it is my view with regard to what it would be by way of deviation, right?
Right.
We're holding that line.
Right.
So.
So, so the deck, the deck is there, we're not changing that on the north side. And the plane of the house exists on the south side, and we're just extending that plane, so if we stay in plane. If it's a tenth of an inch one way or another, one point two inches, right?
Yeah.
A tenth of a foot, excuse me, one point two inches, that's, that's what's at play, but Mr. Miller is confident that. That we're way over in terms of the single side yard setback requirement on the south side, so that's not an issue. If we stay in plane. Thank you, yes, correct, thank you. Okay, and those are the, those are the two variances, right? Um, so, Mr. Miller, um, can you describe the existing materials, uh, and and colors and condition of the house?
Yeah, the, the existing house is typical wood frame construction. Uh, it is on a crawl space, not, there's no basement, um, the, um. Attic space is minimal height, and there's a, uh. Um, a pull-down stair to get to it, there's no full stair, um. There's, uh, it's, like I said, wood frame construction, exterior siding is, um. Uh, I have a picture over here, is vinyl September, is. Is vinyl siding. And we intend on matching the materials, same thing with the, uh, uh. Fiberglass shingles on the roof.
Okay, now, the current square footage, right, the floor area is currently at two thousand seven.
Correct.
So theoretically, right, but.
That's, that's not correct, actually, it's actually less. Um, so, I I can.
I was sorry, I was reading off your letter.
Yes, so. The floor area numbers in my letter need to be updated, um, my numbers are based on scaling the plan. On the computer, essentially, which is what I would do for ninety percent of the projects, Mr. Miller said that. Scaling may be off by a little bit, which was thirty square feet in this case, but has all the dimensions on the four. Four plans, and being that it's pretty simple shape, um, for the most part, it's rectangular. Um, we then recalculated all the square footage based on the dimension shown, and it came to be what is on the plans on the cover sheet. So the existing is one thousand nine hundred and sixty seven square feet. And then the proposed is less than what's in my letter, it's two thousand three hundred and thirty three square feet.
Right, so, a- and and I know we had conversations, and thank you for clarifying that for the board, Mr. Rizzo, I know we had. Had conversations and you had conversations with Mr. Miller to that effect, so we're over, again, just so, so the board. Uh, is is clear on the request, we're over by one hundred and thirty three square feet on the cap of twenty two hundred square feet.
So that, those numbers you gave originally were based on the corrected number after Mr. Rizzo looked at?
Correct, without a revised letter, correct, but 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 as a result of conversations, Chairman, yes, yes. So if you take that hundred and thirty three square feet and you divide it over the two floors, pro rata, if you will, it's sixty six and a half feet per floor, right? I don't have any further questions for Mr. Miller at this time.
So, um, Mr. Atkins, the the assessment of the proposal has to fall by under C one, C two. What's our argument, can you, can you support?
And do you want to talk about the design waivers also? We could talk about the design waivers, right, so, um, if you, if you refer to page four of, uh. The, uh, review letter, uh, identified as Z B two. Um, we've got a requested waiver, uh, with regard to the residential parking being located behind the front side yard setback line. The front yard setback line, I guess we're all a little tired, excuse me, the addition of a fourth bedroom requires three parking spaces behind the front. Yard setback line, whereas no parking spaces are proposed behind the front yard setback line, so that's the first waiver. Um, and then the second waiver is, uh, four-bedroom dwelling requires three off-street parking spaces, whereas one off-street parking space is provided. Those are the waivers.
And then with parking, there's also the R S I S component to it as well. Um, R S I S basically says that the municipality cannot acquire. More than, um, it says, for this case, four bedrooms, it's two and a half spaces, so we'll round that up as three spaces. And then it gives exceptions if there are off-street parking, which I guess you probably speak to. And how many spaces or how many vehicles can physically fit in the driveway. Uh, regardless of what a dimensional stage consists of, like in reality, how many cars can can fit in your, your trailer?
So two smaller sized vehicles could fit in the driveway presently. Front, front to back, yes.
And if it was three bedrooms, how, what's the resist requirement?
Two point zero.
As we're talking about a half a park, so. Round it up the one, round it up, but.
For the fourth bedroom, yes, technically, tho- those are the, those are the numbers, that's the waiver request.
Yes, and the waiver is triggered because of the increase in bedrooms. And then is, is there street parking?
I I would, I would note there's, uh, that there is, um. With the driveway width of approximately ten to twelve feet, there's thirty eight to forty feet of frontage for parking, so that. You know, it's potentially an additional two spaces right in front of the house.
On the street?
On the street.
Is there, um, on-street parking on both sides of that street?
Yes, yeah, and it faces the public works, so there's no houses on the other side.
Public works on the other, uh, on the other side of Maple, yeah. Okay. So we, we, you know, we would analyze this on a, on a, on, you know, flexible C basis. That the benefits outweigh the detriments, and it's, it's, um, it's an appropriate aesthetic improvement. It upgrades a forty-five-year-old house, um, you know, relative to the neighborhood, this isn't an oversized lot. There's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, uh, because the side yard setback well exceeds the minimum, and we've got a technical. Combined side yard setback, which doesn't take into account or result in any substantial detriment as a result of the proposed addition. In the southeast corner, if you will, of the existing residence, um, there's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, there's no substantial detriment to the zone plan.
And the, um, the, the lot coverage is, it's, there's gonna be some pavers.
So, we're, we're propos-, yeah, in order to hold that fifty percent lot coverage. Uh, and and the other two, the other two key metrics as well that I shared in my opening remarks as, as to building coverage, and of course, the F A R. We're proposing to remove those pavers in the, uh, in the front, in the front lawn area.
Alright.
Approximately in the middle of the, uh, middle of the front yard, yes, exactly right, Mr. Porte, yeah. Could I make a hardship argument, um? Well, you know, the, the house itself, relative to, um, what could be built, is substantially undersized at nineteen sixty seven. I think that was our, is that our number, Mr. Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes. And so, um. Whenever the house, you know, whenever the house was designed and built in nineteen eighty, we didn't necessarily contemplate. Where we would be in terms of today's zoning criteria.
Actually, all significantly different, I, I, I don't like the, I don't like the flexible C argument at all. Um, but I do, I do buy into the idea that there is a hardship argument here, because it seems to me you're working around the existing structure. And so in order to get to a four-bedroom house, which is not an unreasonable expectation. You don't have the ability to do so without substantially gutting and remodeling the house, which you're not proposing to do.
We're not proposing to do that, there'd be no change to the front facade, Chairman.
Then there's an efficiency to how it is that you're adding that bedroom upstairs, I suppose you could argue that the office is purposeless, but. If, if the idea here, it's minimalist expansion of the house, in line with the existing structure, you don't have a side yard setback. Kind of have a hardship issue there, because to misalign that or align that differently would create different issues relative to the way the house.
It's also a scale lot, this really can't be seen from the road, it's pretty deep, and it's being tucked in the back.
But thank you, and I, I offered that in my opening remarks as well, that this, this proposed addition will not be visible from.
The, the, the problem I have with the C two argument is that there's a million of these things.
Yeah.
And so if it, if it applies here, it applies everywhere, the standard is on twenty-two, the standard is twenty-three, thirty-three, whatever it is, right?
Yeah.
Um, I prefer to think about this as an accommodation to the existing structure and the efficiency of being able to try and bring it up to modern times. By creating a little bit of extra space.
Without essentially remodeling it, what is this?
Yeah, which is, which is clearly, uh, hardship, no one should be expected to spend four hundred thousand dollars in order to create. Two hundred and fifty, this square feet decision.
About two hundred and thirty-three, two hundred and thirty-three square feet of addition.
No, it's not.
Where you have, where you.
Hundred thirty-three of the cap.
Over the cap.
Alright, back to the cap.
Is it just, architecturally, is there a reason? There's not a window on the side of the proposed bedroom, there's only two windows on that entire side of the house.
We could put one there, but it just looks out at the adjacent house, it's not, you know, it's not. Looking in a backyard or anything, so.
So every once in a while, you need to work.
See that side of the house. I, I, I don't think that you won't see this from history.
Yes.
Street, you can see. The, the area that the honey back from the ash from the street. You will see whether that, whether or not there is an addition there. You will see that there is, I think, you, if you see it, you see that there are only two windows, and it looks like.
It's not that.
It's, it's like under pedestal.
We're.
It's, it's not below, but it, it looks like. There aren't enough windows on that side of the house.
I think it's, I think it's easy, I think you had the window, there's some structure in the back of, uh, one twenty-seven here, it's like an orange looking thing, does anyone know what the cylinder? I mean, this is the only thing that's.
With your phone in heaven.
This is the only thing that if, if you were in that part of this neighboring house.
I'm just asking if there was a reason not to put it there, just when I looked at the house. It struck me that there were only two windows on the second floor of the house, and that was it.
I, I think if you were in this, this side of the neighboring house.
I'm advised it's a deck. Yeah.
Oh, I was trying to get it, in my opinion, that's the only place, like, you're living in that neighboring house, or using it, potentially, I don't know.
Okay, that's, yeah.
I was just questioning why, i- if there was a reason that it wasn't, that's all.
Uh, no reason why we can't add it, Mr. Shavati, no, no trouble at all.
You've satisfied penetration requirements, as it says. Okay, with regard to adding a window, it's easy enough to throw it in, let's just get adding it tonight, I get that. Rooms need to have wall, and so please look at it, and let's just make sure that adding a window there isn't gonna affect your placement of furniture in a. Fairly modest, although twelve by sixteen is decent, by the way.
I, I can, um. Definitely find a, a good spot for the window.
And still have adequate, uh.
Yeah.
Floor plan for the surgery.
And there's no basement, you said, is it, it's a crawl.
Crawl space, yeah.
Yes, a pull-down attic.
And, and, and no usable attic, which I could also throw into the hardship, although, you know.
So, that's all I had, Chairman.
I have to record, you got, you got eight and a half more hours. Okay, um.
Chairman, you want to hear the existing conditions, or does everybody knows and familiar with them?
I think they're, alright.
Okay, so, um, before we go any further, I'm gonna open to the public, are there any, public, any questions or comments with regard to the market? Let the record flag, Mr. Atkins, you gotta be in close.
Nothing in summation, other than to thank the board for the accommodation on this very late hour.
I, I just wanna note that I did not expect to be able to get through it, I, I completely reject the idea of rushing through it. Although the comparison to what we just went through, it certainly makes us instant pressure. Does anybody feel like you don't have time, don't you? Don't feel very good?
Did you, did you want to remove this?
I'm in the back as well. So I'm going to go. It's a lawn.
I, I think, uh, other assets in, in excess of the cap, ranging from thirty to two hundred and ten percent, that six percent is not totally unreasonable when there may be a hardship based on the existing structure.
Sincerely, if you.
It still exists.
Sincerely, if you scraped the lot and came back in with the exact same square footage, the analysis is completely different.
Yep, um, you also got a lot more square footage, right? You get the basement, you get the usable space upstairs, right? You're right, you could manipulate this to much more square footage.
Anybody have any problems or concerns, you want to talk about the vision, the mindset of the window requirement?
I do not.
I'm going to move.
I'll make a motion to approve it, as is contingent on Mr. Miller finding a suitable place for the window on the second story.
S. Um, Forte?
Yes.
Mr. Herman, S. Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Mr. Shabadi?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We do appreciate the accommodation.
All right.
Thank you.
Record, yeah. Yeah. Good luck. What a night for you.
Let us know, let us know next time, uh, when you have a long application.
Funny presenting this, Senator.
There's more square footage.
Sometimes.
Even way too light.
They were right turn, left turn, and we wanted to.
One of the.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, tell them what is. Thank you, sir. So we haven't, we haven't wrapped yet. We haven't wrapped yet. We've got minutes. So we've got minutes. So Jackie's gonna, Jack's gonna make a motion, I think, on the minutes, because she got them, and he made a few edits, right?
Minutes?
Or maybe he didn't, because they're perfect, but you.
She did some research, she did some research last night on that.
To adopt the minutes. Were you here?
No, I, I wasn't. I, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion. She certified to listening. I certified, so I just gotta count these. I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve, and it's from last meeting.
Start it.
Angela? Yes. Forte? Newman, so if I certify, can I though?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yes. Mr. Shabadi?
Yes. Yes. Well, shoot a drink.
Brian Nelson, Nathan Riverlong, drive. On behalf of Mayor Council, thank you. You guys are really impressive. Popscotch was tough. Um, I don't know if stuff as you've dealt with, but it's toughest that I've seen. Um, professionalism, dedication, you know, passion for the town, it really came through, it's really great, so thank you. And if we need, uh, an ordinance change for a waterfront zone, let me talk.
Uh, we can talk about that. I think, um, I I did ask Jordan to add triple law courts to his list of things for us to talk about, because we don't have anything to address that, and that's something I think that if we want to be on trend, we should talk about.
It's one of the technical ones, but it wasn't the most brutal.
I was going to say that.
Motion, what's the? Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very awesome. Okay.